Well, thank you for being so patient. If we're going to go ahead and convene the meeting. And the first thing I'm going to do is just remind everyone to please put your cellphones or iPads onto airplane mode. That would be greatly appreciated. It won't interfere with the microphone. And I'm going to call the meeting to order and we're going to join Councilmember Cruz in the pledge allegiance. Irene, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Walter.
Here.
Thank you.
We pull out of closed session.
Mayor, there was no reportable action taken at tonight's closed session. However, for the record, Councilmember Brigham did not participate in both Items Two and Three related to property interests she has closed to the property. Also, Councilmember Cruz did not participate in Item Number Two related to property that she has closed to the property in question as well.
Thank you. Conflict of interest? Any conflicts of interest?
Which item?
I believe it's Item Number Nine, Jose.
Yep. Item Nine. I'll be recused.
Okay. Let the record show that Councilmember Cruz is going to recuse herself from Item Number Nine. Nothing else?
Is it on?
It's on.
Here.
Oh. Sorry about that. Thank you, Shirley. Next is the agenda review.
Mayor Walter, members of council. One request to change tonight is to pull Item Number Six on the consent calendar for a discussion item. It's council's pleasure where you'd like to place that. Staff does have just a minor amendment to the recognized obligation payment schedule that's included in the packet.
Thank you. Okay, so Item Number Six will be pulled from the consent calendar and handled as an individual item. Next is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on items that do not appear on the agenda this evening may do so. You just step up to the podium. Please make sure that you sign the little pad that's there so Irene can have the proper spelling of your name and share with us what you have to say.
Does this work? Oh, it works. How you guys doing?
Good.
Everybody knows who I am?
Yes.
Do I need to introduce?
Just go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Casey Carr. I'm from Russian Riverkeeper. I pick up trash around here on the rivers and I also do a free trash pickup for the homeless encampments that we have around here on the river. I'm here tonight just to mention winter shelter. We don't have a winter shelter. We don't have a -- there's -- none of the churches are open. There's no bedding during the winter and I'm just here to just put in your ear, maybe give it some thought. I know Hillsburg is getting some stuff together. They got a winter shelter they do at St. Paul's Church, I believe. And then they're also getting some housing going on. There's a lot of moving around on the encampments. You know, the sheriffs come in, they do their sweeps. And the impact that the homeless have on the river is, there is an impact. And it's -- but the issue that is bothering me is that they get moved around a lot and so they create an impact in one area and then there's an impact in another area and then they're swept out and there's another impact in another area. And a lot of times, too, they go deeper into areas to where I can't really get into because we have this partnership, you know? They bag up their trash, I put it in the truck, I haul it to the dumps. So when they get moved around a lot, it becomes a pain to try to locate. It's time consuming. So that's about it, just to mention some kind of winter shelter in the near future. I was at a meeting. Gus was there, Melanie was there, and James Gore and all those guys. And I don't know what happened after that. I haven't been to any other meetings after. And I don't know what you guys have talked about. I'm not really up to speed on a lot of that stuff. So that's about it.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Casey. Councilmember Brigham?
Yeah, I just wanted to -- I don't have a mic that works. Next Tuesday, one to three, at the Fire Department. The next meeting about the homeless task force.
There's a task force in Cloverdale?
We're beginning one. This will be the second meeting.
Oh.
And so it's next Tuesday, one to three, Fire Department. Public is welcome, public is listening.
I work until six, but I'll see what I can do.
We're hoping that the third meeting will try and schedule it in the evening at six o'clock, just so people who do work -- because I've gotten that complaint from a lot of people. So yeah, we agree, there needs to be something done. It's now we've got to just all put our heads together and figure out what the best way to do this is.
Right. That's great. I didn't know that. That's good to hear.
Thank you, Casey.
So I'm hoping to have you at the table.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Casey.
Appreciate what you do. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Ben Granholm. I'm with the Western Propane Gas Association. I'd like to start by thanking you for the opportunity to comment this evening. WPGA has been engaging with a number of city councils around the state and in the local area regarding local reach codes and local decarbonization efforts. We're aware that the city of Cloverdale is developing an all-electric favored reach code. And first, I'd like to make it clear that WPGA is incredibly supportive of these local decarbonization efforts and decarbonization as a whole. And while we do believe that moving forward with the favored option is preferable to an all-electric only option, we'd like to express the benefits that propane provides communities and ask that even the proposed all-electric favored code follow an example set by the San Luis Obispo City Council and not restrict new construction plumbing in propane. Over the past couple of months, and it's under my understanding you'll hear a little bit about this tonight as well, we've seen millions of Californians across the state stranded in the cold and the dark due to the -- excuse me, due to the power safety or the public safety power shut offs. These occurrences are expected to continue for at least the next 10 years. And our prime example is to why relying on a single energy source such as electricity is unacceptably risky and accentuates the need for both energy diversity and resiliency. Those are two things that residents are not going to receive by relying solely on electric. Whereas following the shut offs, we heard from countless individuals who were able to power their homes, stay warm, and ensure that essential life-sustaining equipment was not turned off during the shut offs because their homes were also plumped with propane. Propane can provide a clean, uninterrupted energy at a cheaper rate than electricity. The propane industry is proud of the role that we play by providing an affordable, a clean, and a non-methane energy for low-income communities as well as a vital backup power for solar-powered homes when energy and battery levels are not at peak levels. We believe that disincentivizing propane as a complementary power source to solar has an unintended consequence to make solar homes more expensive and less reliable when power generation is not at its best. We also have concerns with the cost-effectiveness study that many of these cities are using in the development of their reach codes. The data that we've seen in the study, and we've brought this to the CEC as well, does not appear to calculate the true cost of plumbing a house with propane. There's no substantial cost differential in between building with propane in comparison to electric, especially once you factor in the cost of the energy. As our industry looks towards the future, we are investing heavily in renewable propane, which is derived from renewables and sustainable sources like beef tallow or vegetable oil. And we just hope that regulators will take a holistic view of the complementary role that propane plays alongside decarbonization efforts, including solar, wind, and other renewable fuels. We believe that clean energy solutions should not have to compete against one another when they can often complement each other. This point is illustrated by Dr. Ernest Moniz. He's a physicist and a former U.S. Energy Secretary under the Obama administration. His nonprofit produced a report on how to decarbonize California's economy. And the gist of the report is that all low-carbon energy solutions must be deployed today, which includes low-carbon gaseous fuels like renewable propane.
Thank you.
And with that, thank you.
Thank you. And do you have a copy of that that you could leave with the city clerk?
Yeah, absolutely.
With your written statement?
Sure.
Okay.
And well, I can email it to someone if that's easier because this one has some marks on it. But I also submitted a letter back in October to the city council as well.
Well, if you could leave that with the city clerk, we'd appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else looking to address the city council on items that do not appear on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section. And now we have proclamations and presentations. And I believe the first item is a presentation to our outgoing mayor, Mayor Melanie Bagby. David, did we order that thing that we talked about yet?
Mayor, we are working on a formal plaque for the mayor.
Thank you.
For the councilmember.
Well, just in case that plaque doesn't come in, I have something right here for her that I'd like to give her. But first, Melanie, I think the full city council will agree that you did a wonderful job as mayor. And I look forward to you becoming mayor again. But this is a Cloverdale City Council Certificate of Commendations acknowledging the contributions that were made by Melanie to the committees that she belongs on representing Cloverdale. So Melanie, I thank you for that. And I'm going to open it up to the councilmembers and the public to add anything. But before we do do that, I'd like to present you with this. And I hope I don't offend anyone out there. I really do, but especially you, Melanie. But this is for you.
It's probably unavoidable. It's a toilet brush. It's a Trump brush. And it says --
Then let's hope we offend people.
Make toilets great again. So Melanie, this is for you.
Oh, thank you.
And with much appreciation for your work.
Thank you.
For your work on the city council.
That was very thoughtful.
Councilmembers, do you have anything to add?
Mayor?
You may.
Anyone who wants to borrow this, you're welcome to.
Melanie, I just want to say that during my first year serving on city council, to witness your example as mayor was very inspiring, to see the presence that you gave Cloverdale in the regional and statewide. And I could go on and on about all the different committees and places that you belong to. You really did Cloverdale a great service and thank you for your year. And I have to echo Gus. I look forward to you doing it again.
Anyone from the audience would like to say anything? Lariva?
My name is Lariva Miles and I'm a citizen of Cloverdale. And I just want to say that I've known Melanie for long enough that I believe she was a planning commissioner, and then she was a city council person, and then she was the mayor. And I've always appreciated that she's been very professional and brought a great deal of knowledge about planning. And at one point, I asked her a simple question and she just buried me in all of the information that I needed to know to be able to ask that question and get my answer. So I'd just like to say I think you've done a great job over all the years that you have participated in city government. And I will be sorry to see you not being in that position, but there's always the future if you should decide to return. So thank you for all of your service.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmembers, staff? Marner?
Yes. Is it working? Still working?
Let me borrow yours. There are one microphone to hold it.
Okay. As a junior councilmember last year, I learned plenty from Mayor Bagby. She's been a role model and really held my hand through all the county and state boards and conferences that we were able to attend. It inspired me to really bring services to Cloverdale, which I've done successfully and I'm very happy to continue to be her partner in the legal cities. So thank you and I hope that we can continue to put Cloverdale on the top.
Thank you, Marner.
I appreciate the most that you reached out into the county and on the state level, something that I really don't enjoy anymore. And I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
David?
Mayor, councilmembers, if I can, and for the benefit of the community, just want to state that it's just a tremendous amount of work to serve as your mayor and to represent our city in our best interests, both at the state level, the regional level, and the local level. And it comes with no additional compensation for all that additional work and time that you put into that. And I think I echo Councilmember Brigham's comments that it's very important, and it often goes unrecognized, the efforts that are needed to represent our small city in the state of California with all the other cities. And it's an important role to play. Former mayor, now councilmember Bagby, played a really strong leadership role at the State League of California Cities in making sure that Cloverdale's interests were represented in that big sea of other cities in California. And I think that it really goes understated, the amount of time and effort that has to be put into that to make sure that our interests locally here are represented. And not to mention all the effort that requires meeting with me as the city manager and going through the agenda on a regular basis and, you know, making sure that all that work is coordinated so that it comes to you in a professional format and in a way that's supported by the community. Councilmember Bagby, I really enjoyed working with you as mayor. I hope it strengthened our bond and our relationship. And I, of course, as the mayor said, you know, as you have that opportunity again to serve our community and the mayor, I look forward to it. But in the meantime, I hope you'll continue to be a leader in your role as councilmember as you were as mayor and be on front and top of a number of critical issues that we'll continue to face our community. So thank you.
Yes. Anyone else? Staff? Councilmembers? Melanie?
I'm fine.
You're fine? Okay. Well, thank you again.
Let's get on with it.
Enjoy your brush. And David, is it possible that we can move this screen seeing how it's not working?
Well, we're going to give it a try.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, the next item is a presentation from the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce, an update on activities for fiscal year 2019 and 2020.
Mayor, councilmembers, if I can, while Nina Hanchett and members of the Board of Directors of the Chamber, including Kelly Voss and her assistant Savannah makes her way up to the desk and we get the presentation ready. Just a quick overview. The city council has, on an annual basis, agreed to support the economic development activities by promoting business activities within the city by supporting the Chamber of Commerce. One of the critical aspects to that support is obviously maintaining and operating the visitor center. We've seen quite a presence by Nina and her team at her office. And I can say it provides a lot of support and relief to staff at City Hall by being able to answer and address questions from the community, but also being that business liaison for staff. It goes kind of above and beyond what's really identified in their scope of work. But it really, as I often refer to both Nina and Savannah, as Team Cloverdale because it's often called upon to enlist their assistants to help us with our economic development initiatives, but other initiatives that may have an effect or impact on the business community. So some of the things that our current funding agreement covers includes, obviously, the staffing of the visitor center, as I mentioned, but also marketing and promotion and events. And I know Nina is going to touch on that. And then last but not least, some of the future business support tasks. So with that, I'll kind of wait to get the presentation up and running. And Nina's going to walk you through, really what this is, is kind of a midpoint update for the current fiscal year in terms of the activities that they've completed to date. And there's a whole lot more to come.
And David, this presentation is also in the agenda packet, right?
Right.
Yes, sir. We have it up here.
If you just want to like give us like a thumbs up that we need to switch the page, that would be super.
Yeah, I can do that.
Just a couple more minutes and then we'll go ahead and give up on it.
Yeah, and then we can just go through it.
Is it showing up here?
Thank you. It's showing on the big screen, Kevin?
No.
Oh, nowhere.
Showing on this screen and we have a handout, but you, if you wanted to, I don't know if you have your agenda packets.
You might just try plugging it directly in.
Why don't you try shaking the wire?
Yeah.
Oh, seriously, that, shake it.
Turning it off and on again.
Unplug it and then plug it back in again.
Melanie says off and on again.
Turn it off and on again.
Yeah. Unplug it and plug it back in.
Be like the old Sega cartridge where you blow it out.
It often works.
So. Oh, yay. I saw something. I saw a ski scene. Oh. Okay, well, we'll just, that's fine. Sorry.
Or maybe not at all.
We did a PowerPoint if anybody wants it. I'm happy to send it to you. I'm Nina Hanchett. I'm the director of the Cloverdale --
David, can we remove the screen if it's possible?
People can download it from the packet, too, if they've been watching on their phones if they want to. If you want to announce that, but --
Councilmember Bagby reminded me that you can watch it on your phones. You can download it from the city website and you can see the presentation.
There you go. I'm Nina Hanchett.
Thank you, Nina.
You're welcome. Mayor Walter. Mayor Walter, city council, city staff, city attorney, Mr. Sanchez. I am Nina Hanchett. I'm the director of the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce, which is a very lofty title. It includes a lot of things that are not very lofty, but it's a great job. And then I'm right to my right is Savannah Hempel. She's our associate director. And Kelly Voss is our board member and secretary. She's also the owner of Voss Signature Vintage. So what we wanted to do is just take a couple of minutes and tell you what we've been up to, even though some of you know and some of you suspect. So we are proud of our relationship with the city in terms of being their marketing and promotion arm. Experiance Cloverdale is the umbrella that we are using to promote Cloverdale locally, regionally, and worldwide. So we, one of the things that we do every month, Savannah will test of this, is we get a list of brand-new residents to Cloverdale and we deliver, hand-deliver bags that are filled with things such as a letter from the mayor, a letter from the Cloverdale Chamber, information from businesses that want to participate in that bag. It could be keychains, it could be menu, it could be menus from restaurants, it could be magnetic cards for the refrigerator, whatever. So we do those, we do that every month. And we also work with property managers for people that have new tenants coming into Cloverdale. It's great to find out where they come from, a lot of times from Windsor, from other areas, from areas all over. And it's nice to welcome them. They're shocked. So it's pleasant. And then you press the ring button and you go, "I know you see my face." I hold up the bag. So anyway, it's great. So one of the things that we embarked on in mid-September was 365 days of Experiance Cloverdale on Instagram. We started out with Melanie Bagby, mayor. And every day, we post another photo of Cloverdale. It could be, it could be a nature scene, it could be a business, it could be people, it can be events, but it's all Cloverdale, all Jermaine to Cloverdale. And thus far, we have, we've averaged about 22,000, almost 23,000 views a month on Instagram, Facebook, our website, and Face, did I say Facebook? Yeah, Facebook. And December was even bigger than that. It was close to 27,000. So it's, depending upon, November was kind of crazy with, on the heels of the PSPS power shut offs and that kind of thing, October was a little lower, November was pretty good, and then December spiked again. So that was great. Couple of things that we've either developed or partnered with was the sidewalk sale in August. It's the second annual sidewalk sale. Downtown businesses participated. People were downtown shopping with their bags, which we love, 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 love. And we're going to do it again. We're going to continue to do the sidewalk sale. And other people have asked us if there's an interest in doing it more than one time a year. We are going to stick with one time, the summer, the end of summer sale. It seems to be the best for our retailers to be able to clean out inventories and still have people downtown buying things, which we love. So then on the heels of the sidewalk sale in August, we had the car show. And that was in early September, the week after Labor Day. It was a beautiful day, perfect Cloverdale day. We had about 220 cars, some one-of-a-kind. We had each entry that showed up and registered in the morning, they got a list of all of our restaurants within walking distance and shops within walking distance. We did that because we want to encourage people that are in town to see what we have. And another reason we did that is that we don't want, we didn't have any vendors or food vendors that were selling food that people could find in our restaurant. So we love the fact that if you want to, if you want to get something to eat, you can go to Mo's, you can go to Papa's, you can go to wherever. And if people want a slice of pizza, they're not going to get it from a pizza cart. It's great. So and then we did things a little bit differently this year. We partnered with the Alexander Valley Film Festival and they showed American Graffiti at the Citrus Fair the same night. So it was their second highest attendance and it was perfect. There were lots of classic cars there. It was, I thought it was a nice marriage. Next year, we're going, or this year, the next car show, we're going to partner with the Citrus Fair. And the cruise night, they're going to be providing some food and music and having the cars staged there and then leave from there and go downtown and then come back. It's, I think it's going to be a lot of fun and it seems like it's also a good sort of symbiotic relationship. There's no way that one organization can do all of that and do it effectively. So the Citrus Fair Board stepped up and thought that, in fact, it was their idea to, we've got all these people in town, you know, let's show them what we have. And then new this year, in the midst of the PSPS craziness and Halloween and no power, we initiated a downtown we initiated a downtown Cloverdale trick-or-treat. Kids, when they get out from school, in the past, their parents have taken them down to Healdsburg and they get, do their trick-or-treating down there and wait a minute. It was really, really, really fun. The families, the parents, the grandparents, the kids, it was magical, it truly was. And then from there, they continued walking through the downtown after, how many, how many businesses ran out of candy? Nobody had enough candy. And then they went to the Citrus Fair for trunk-or-treat and it was packed. It was, a number of people came, came to the chamber and said, we love this, we want you to do this. It's early enough that the kids don't, you know, they're not staying up really, really late, you know, sugar-fed, staying up really, really late. And we love being downtown. It was perfect. So it was really nice. And now Savannah pretty much put this together with no power. We have, we had a map showing where businesses were participating, but people jumped on at the last minute, people that actually had power that didn't think they were going to have power. So it was, it was fun. We're going to do that next year, this year. And then, yeah, I'm confused, it's January. So we also, second year, we've coordinated the Jefferson School kids decorating trees. There were 13 classes, 13 businesses that put trees in their businesses and the kids made their own ornaments. In fact, at the chamber, we had, we had second graders last year and then third graders this year. And many of the third graders were at our office last year decorating and they saw their ornaments. They put their names on them. It was super cute. And one of the things that businesses told me and that I felt myself in Savannah too is that it really, it kind of gets you, you know, kind of fueled for the holidays. It's super sweet. And the kids, oh, yeah, they're great. They're really, really great. So we want to continue doing that. And then right on the heels of that, the next day, we had a deluge. We've had the winter festival for five years. It's been really cold and nice for 44 of those years. This year was, it was, it rained, it didn't, it wasn't even rain, it was something beyond rain. But with the help of cities, the people that work at the city, volunteers, the community, the fire department, CAL FIRE, we made the plaza look really festive with red and white tents. Santa came, the Lions Club was able to give out their donuts and we, it was as good, it was as good as we could do with what, and the people that did come downtown, they made it a point to go to the stores. And retailers, I know I've checked in with several of them, they said they did really well. And it's just nice to have people walking with their bags and their umbrellas, which we had, we had huge umbrellas that were donated as well for people that didn't have umbrellas. So we're going to have, now we have a fair weather and a foul weather plan for next And in the PowerPoint that's in your agenda, there's some great pictures from that. There's a picture of the Citrus Fair Queen, Mayor Bagby, now Vice Mayor Turner, and Ms. Sonoma County. They're under the tents and it was, it was, the restaurants were full. They were full. You were busy, I know, I know. You served good wine, too. Always do. So we've had lots of positive feedback, email, people that said that they brought their kids and grandkids and thank you for putting the extra effort in. You know, it wasn't, we didn't close the streets down, we didn't do any of that because we tried to make lemonade out of lemons, so. What's coming up? This is the fun part. We're working on an Instagram wall, a photo wall. It was approved by the Planning Commission. It's the Cloverdale, Experience Cloverdale X. It's going to have three hashtag Instagram, sorry, three Instagram sites. Experience Cloverdale, hashtag Cloverdale CA, and hashtag Sonoma County. And then it's going to have the geographic coordinates for Cloverdale. Everybody's doing it. It's where you do selfies. It's on the building that, it's going to be on the building where our salon is. It's a gray wall now and it's going to have the green X, Experience X, and Kelly's students.
Yeah, so I'm teaching art at the high school now and my students are going to be taking the X.
That's cool.
So it's, it should be, and hopefully people will come in that are looking at their phones and say, I can do a selfie and Cloverdale's on the map. So we're going to do that, weather sort of permitting. School just got back into session. And then we're also in the process of fabricating two welcome signs in Cloverdale. And I'm sorry that the audience can't see them, but it says, Welcome Cloverdale, Sonoma County, because we're fighting the battle all the time that Cloverdale is indeed in Sonoma County. A lot of people don't think it is. I don't know where they think it is, but they don't think it's Sonoma County. And so Fletcher Fabrication in Cloverdale is working their metal. They're going to be beautiful, they're going to be lit. There's one that's going to replace that old wooden one just south of the Hamburger Ranch. And then the other's going to be at the Citrus Fair entrance to the city. And those should be, I mean, they're being developed right now. And they're getting powder-coated, they're, they're going to have a shelf life of 20, 25 years. And so we're anxious to let people know that they have indeed arrived in Cloverdale, California. Oh, a couple of other things that I didn't put on our presentation, but we do things like the Spirit of Sonoma County. We come up with nominees. We coordinate with the Economic Development Board to, for that beautiful luncheon that's done where they're honored and we are honoring them, people that make a difference in their community. This year, we did Lori Neeland. We've done Mary Ann has been a nominee in years past.
Long time ago.
Yeah, me too, it was ages ago. Gus has been a Spirit nominee as well. And then we also do things like, we had an invitation, we had a tour of Journeyman Meat Company that was done by Pete Sagacio. I'm, I have a really bad head cold and it's probably evident. So that was great. We had, there were a number of people that, this facility is an amazing facility. It is between Portland and San Francisco, it is the only USDA-certified salami packing plant. And it's right in, at the end of Roizer, at the end of Santana. And it was very interesting. So we're happy to do that and want to even provide more of that for some of our businesses that don't get a lot of the, people don't even know that they're there. Places like All Coast, places like New Forest Products, people that even, that have all kinds of people that live and work there and provide, and provide economic platform for this city. So, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer or try.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, any questions before I open it up or any comments? Jason?
Do you mind, I thought this was such a great thing that you did all year, just for the benefit of everybody, will you talk a little bit about the chamber mixers that you held in different businesses? I thought they were fantastic.
Yeah, I certainly will. We have had typically a mixer a month at different businesses. Towards the end of the year, it was like the same 15 people attending, so we're going to try to shake that up a bit. I'm not exactly sure how, but we are going to do that, whether it's quarterly or every other month, something like that, where we partner, for example, with the Trading Post or something like that, where they are doing an event and we do an event with them. So we're kind of looking to sort of re-engineer that. But it's a ton of fun and a number of businesses, we got a call today, what's the mixer schedule for 2020? So we don't, we want it to be interesting, we want it to be of interest, we want it to be something that the business community welcomes. So we're going to try to put a little different flavor on it.
And then just a comment, being the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce this last year has been an amazing experience. And what I can say with absolute assurance is these meetings are full of content and it's people really putting their minds together to figure out how best to market this city that we love. And all the events were so very toddler-approved. My son loved the trunk-or-treat. He loved going around to the businesses. The car show, to try and keep his hands off stuff I could not afford to fix, was an adventure in itself. And I just want to take a moment and just say thank you for a wonderful experience being your liaison and just being able to be a part of that think tank that you guys have going. And the results are very evident, in my opinion.
Well, it's an amazing group. The board is an active, roll-your-shirts-sleeves-up group. And we are doing it because we love it and we want Cloverdale to be even better than it is now. And be a place for families, be a place for people that can find jobs and that kind of thing. And know what's here to support, because there's a lot of neat things in town.
Councilmembers? Melanie?
I'm hoping this, hoping this is going to work. Yay, there we go. I just wanted to thank you and commend you again. I just thought that the events this year were fantastic, especially Halloween. And I'll just say that, so the council had, I think it was an emergency meeting on Halloween at the firehouse and Jason and I, I walked. And so Jason and I walked back and he met his family and were trick-or-treating. And I got to run into all my friends. And I, I didn't get to go to the trunk-or-treat because we were just off downtown and so we, and we had decorated, like flash-decorated that afternoon, as did so many of my other neighbors. And so we wanted to be home for the trick-or-treaters. But it just was, the response was.
It was super sweet.
Very positive. And people being very proud to be able to stay here and have an experience like that.
And why not?
Why not? And the winter festival, I just, you pulled another rabbit out of the hat. It was just, it was fantastic. It was a great night. And it was like, and it was surprising how many people really did turn out and face the cold and, and the best part of the night for me, well, second best was going to Kelly's shop and, and shopping. It was kind of hard to try on clothes when you were wearing three layers of clothes to stay warm and dry. But the best thing was going to the New Music Store and listening to the kids playing, kids, and I mean, they were kids, like eight and 10-year-olds, playing Beach Boys. It was the best. And so it just like really see the downtown livening up and, you know, you deserve so much of the credit for that and just wanted to.
It's a collaboration.
Exactly. Just want to say thank you. And also give Kelly a heads up, now that I know you're doing the art projects with the kids at the high school, I would encourage you to get in contact with Councilmember Cruz regarding of possible mural projects, because we do have the Economic Development Packet from the city of Eureka that did a downtown art project and did, does mural series and they paint utility boxes. And now that we have somebody who can be a conduit for that between the chamber and the high school, I just think it's a good opportunity to get that restarted, so.
Because I've actually, I've seen a kid ask me, have you been there?
There's all these blank walls here. Yeah, it'd be great. So hopefully, maybe in the coming year, that's something that we can work on.
It's great to have that tie back to the schools, too. And we also have two, we'll have two new students as liaison, council, sorry, board members for the chamber. We just don't know who they are yet.
Members of the public, Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I want to.
Sorry.
I want to thank you for coordinating our tour of the geysers.
Oh, yeah, that was.
That was an incredible event.
That was almost a year ago.
And it's very important that we see what resources we have in the community and the incredible people who reside here in Cloverdale. That was particularly special for all of us, because I always thought that, I don't know if it was Yogi Bear or what bear was around geysers when I was growing up and I wanted to always see a geyser.
It was, it was really, really interesting. It was a whole day of things I'd never seen or heard about before.
And again, I especially thank you for having the student liaisons. They were incredible. And I look forward to seeing and working with the new ones this year. I also want to thank you for being present at the binational fair that took place a little bit, more than a year. But it is always good to see the presence of the chamber. Thank you.
We should be everywhere, ubiquitous.
Members of the public, anybody like to say anything about the chamber, other than they're great?
Or that.
Okay. Well, Nina, I'm just going to ditto everything that everyone else said. You know, my door is always open, I always stop by and say hello. And if there's anything you need, just, just let us know. But keep up the good work.
And that holds for all of y'all. I mean, half the time I'm running after you going, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And your board as well. I know it's a lot of hard work and, you know, the board members don't get to go home on board night and spend it with their families, so we do appreciate their work as well.
Mayor.
Marner?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that, and Councilmember Bagby, that Kelly and I are working on a fashion project already. That's fashion with trash.
I'm forward to it.
And I'm just going to add one more thing. I've talked to, I've talked to David Kelly about this before and Nina, I think I've talked with you about it as well, to have a business after hours down at the water treatment plant. It's really amazing. I'm sure Darren would not mind giving tours of the treatment plant, but it's amazing what three or four people can do to keep this city in good, clean water. Okay? Good. Thank you. Next is a presentation on the Sonoma County Homeless Count. Michael is.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, we don't have a.
Well, I did bring.
Screen. Did you throw some handouts?
I brought, well, I didn't bring more than one, but I brought one I can look at, so.
And we have, city councilmembers have theirs in their agenda packet.
Let me see here. So I will, I've done this so many times, I can probably, oh yeah, if we can get it on here, that'd be great.
Mayor, councilmember, if I can, just take an opportunity to introduce Michael. Michael's here tonight from the Sonoma County Community Development Commission. The Community Development Commission is the county agency that really oversees all the HUD-funded programs within the county. And what he's going to present tonight is an overview of the point-in-time homeless count that was conducted for 2019. And at this point, we, the 2019 data was collected almost a year ago. And so we're going to be pretty quickly moving into the count for 2020. But the data that Michael's going to share with the council this evening is, provides important logitudinal data for tracking over time. And I'm sure Michael will kind of touch on that. But I want to thank Michael for making his way from the county seat from Santa Rosa up to Cloverdale tonight to provide this presentation to the city council.
Thank you. Thank you, David. I think you just did my work, so, I'm just joking. Good overview. So again, thanks for having me up here tonight. It's nice to get out of Santa Rosa, actually, and get up into Cloverdale for a bit. So as David said, I'm going to give an overview of last year's count, some of the salient points that you have in front of you. And if the public wishes to have the PowerPoint, I could provide that to staff, to the poster or what have you. The full count report is actually online on our website for the Community Development Commission. So members of the public can go and read the full 95-page report if they wish, or an executive summary. So I'm going to spend a few minutes on kind of recapping last year's data and then just spend a few minutes at the end just talking about the count that's coming up on January 31st, 2020. So that's about three weeks away and coming fast. And I'll talk about what that looks like up here in Cloverdale for that evening, or that morning of the count. So as David said, I'm the Ending Homelessness Manager with the Community Development Commission. We're the lead agency for homelessness in the county. Collaborate with a variety of local jurisdictions. We're working with Healdsburg and Cloverdale at that joint task force that meets Friday is the next meeting of that task force. With that said, I'll jump right in and as y'all probably know, we have a couple of big issues going on in Santa Rosa right now, so I'm pleased to talk about this tonight. So just an overview, we do have to do this count every year, last 10 days of January mandated by HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development. We do it every year. When I started five years ago, yesterday, my five-year anniversary with the county. year. When I started five years ago, yesterday, my five-year anniversary with the county, um, we switched to an annual count. So we've done it every single year since 2015. Um, you, you only have to do it every two years, but we switched to the annual count to get better data. Um, last year's count took place from 5:00 to 10:00 AM across the county. Uh, that is a HUD rule that you have to start real dang early at 5:00 in the morning, um, which means a lot of us are starting around 3:00, 3:00, 3:30 to get going that morning. Um, and the reason is just to, to get people before, um, to count people before they leave shelter and things like that. That's why we have to go so early. Um, and it really allows us to track subpopulation trends, gaps in services, and informs future planning. And we have, we're dependent on, uh, about 3.7 million from the HUD, from the federal government. We have to do a count, uh, to access that funding. Um, it's also used for state funding as well, including the state funding that came, uh, our way last year. Uh, just looking at some of the results, um, last year, we had a count of 2,951 individuals. Uh, again, this is an observation only count. We're not, we're never gonna count every single person. Uh, but we do canvass every single census tract with, last year, about 150 volunteers and 70 people who are currently homeless. The folks who are homeless are paid for their efforts, uh, in the count. So they're actually paired up with volunteers who do the driving. Uh, that 2,951 was a, a 2% reduction from 2,096 in 2018. Um, and that 2018 number had been our first increase in, uh, seven years. So I know that homelessness is, is a visible issue. Um, until 2018, we'd actually been declining. Um, our, our high water mark was almost 4,500 people back in 2013. Uh, and that was directly after the Great Recession, obviously. Um, so we've been in a slow down, slow dip, um, and then spiked a little in 2018 and, and had a decrease last year, which is welcoming to see. Um, of those individuals, 66% are, are what we term as unsheltered. And that's living in a place not meant for human habitation. Um, that's close to 2,000. Uh, and the other third, 34%, are people living in, or who are residing in shelters. Um, example up here would be Wallace House, right, in Cloverdale. Um, or transitional housing. So you might see Healdsburg having a sheltered count. Was there, there's no shelter in Healdsburg. There's actually transitional housing, which still counts as homelessness in Healdsburg that Reach For Home operates. Um, of folks who are unsheltered, 29% of those folks are living in vehicles. So we've seen a big increase in folks in their cars, which I, I don't think would come as a surprise to a lot of folks. Um, and then 24% literally on the street, um, or in encampment. When we look at subpopulations, we have about six that we look at in terms of breaking down, uh, by who folks are. Um, we had a count of 675 individuals who are what we term chronically homeless. Uh, and these are folks who have been homeless at least one year and have a disabling condition. And those folks are the hardest to serve, right? Those are the most vulnerable in our community, uh, the ones we're trying to serve first because they, they do require the most resources. Um, that was actually a drop in our chronic homeless population of about, uh, I believe 10% from 2018. So we've made some, some progress there. Uh, 210 veterans, um, that number has held steady the last few years. We had a high water mark of about 400 vets back in 2013. So we've been able to cut that in half roughly, but still 210 veterans is, is unacceptable for all of us. Um, we've had a, a pretty significant reduction in families. So 87 families counted as homeless. Um, that's a decrease of about 17% from 2018. Um, the, the concerning part last year that we saw was in what I like to call the each end of the spectrum, um, our youth and our older adults. So we had a 29% increase in youth. Um, and that, that includes children under 18 who are by themselves and predominantly 18 to 24-year-olds who are, who are called transition age youth. Um, and we also saw an increase of about 10% in the number of older adults. Those are 55 and over. Um, so 657 youth who are homeless, 455 older adults. So I think that really goes back to the lack of housing, the impact of the fires, which has really impacted people on either end of the age spectrum, right? Our young people and our elderly. Um, just to, to look at a, a few key stats, 87% of people, um, became homeless here in Sonoma County. Um, and that, we get this information from surveys we do, about 600 surveys we do in the field after the count, uh, over the two weeks after the count. Um, so that kind of combats a myth. We hear that people come from other places. Um, by and large, the folks who are homeless here in the county are from Sonoma County. Um, that figure is held between 82 and 87% the last five years, seven years, actually. Um, of folks who are homeless here, 70% have been here more than 10 years. Um, so again, seven out of 10 have been here for a long, long time. Um, 34% of people have experienced domestic violence. Um, and 16% have had some involvement in the sex trade. Uh, that, that history of DV has, has increased the last few years to about a third of all folks. Uh, and then looking at first episode of homelessness, uh, we saw a decrease last year. 30% of people said this was their first time being homeless. And that was down about 5% from the year before. So that was a, a nice, that was a good sign of progress that we were seeing fewer first time. After the fires in 2017, we saw a significant jump in first time homeless, which was not surprising, uh, considering how the fires impacted us all. Um, and stop me, feel free to, stop me if you want to, before I get to the end. I got a few more slides, but feel free to jump in. Um, in terms of what led to being homeless, um, pretty much every year, the, the number one reason is loss of a job, uh, 19%, uh, last year. Um, 18% argument with a friend or a family member. Uh, for our youth and young people, that increases to about 34%. That's the predominant reason young people become homeless is because of a, an argument with a family member or a friend and they're subsequently kicked out or lose their housing. Um, and then alcohol or drug use, 16% eviction, 12%. Um, seven out of 10 folks use some sort of government services, 71%. Um, and the, the big, and big indicator here I'd like to point out is 89% of people say they would take permanent housing if it became available. And that number's about the same every year, 89, 90%. It's a good, good number to state. Nine out of 10 people would take it if it was there. Um, we do know we don't have enough permanent housing. That's a, a real lack in the community. Uh, in terms of, uh, a couple of other key, key points, um, 38% of folks report alcohol or drug use. Um, and 42% of folks report a disabling condition. That could be mental or physical. Uh, 35%, uh, report some sort of mental, mental health issue or psychiatric emotional condition. Um, so again, close to 35, 40% of folks saying that they've either experienced substance abuse or, or drug, or, uh, mental health issues. Those numbers tend to jump when we talk about our chronically homeless. Again, the folks who've been homeless the longest tend to have a higher incidence of, uh, substance abuse and, and mental health issues. Uh, last thing to recap from last year, uh, starting in 2018, we've done this for two years now. Um, after the fires, we put in a telephone survey, um, to try to get at the number of people who are not technically homeless per the federal standards, um, but folks we call precariously housed. Uh, and those are folks who are doubled up, living with friends or family, couch surfing. Um, those circumstances are not counted as homeless. Uh, you can't actually physically count people in that circumstance because we can't go into homes. Um, but you can do a telephone survey. Um, and what we have found the last two years is that there are roughly about 21,000 people in Sonoma County, um, who identify as precariously housed, um, which is a, a pretty significant number. These are folks who could drop into homelessness, uh, with just one more, uh, you know, loss of a job or mischeck. Um, the way we do that is we call about 11, 1,200 people over about a three-week period and ask a battery of questions. And then we can sample, extrapolate that out, uh, to the larger population. That number's about the same as last year. We saw fewer people who were direct, who were precariously housed as a result of the fires, but more people who were precariously housed because of the secondary effects after the fires. You know, maybe the landlord moved in or something like that happened to force them into, to that situation. Um, I will just touch on really quick the upcoming count and then, uh, happy to answer questions. So again, uh, we have the, the street, the, the 2020 count. Still so funny to say 2020. It's a new decade. Um, 2020 count is coming up on January 31st. Uh, that has a couple of components. The sheltered count is actually exact. Uh, we can call all of our shelters, uh, the night before the count and get an exact count of who's there and how many people are there. Um, and then starting at 5:00 AM, the morning of the 31st, uh, we send volunteers out from, uh, Healdsburg, uh, which actually covers Cloverdale. Um, I should back up and say we had a 59-person count in Cloverdale last year within the jurisdiction. So 59 people were counted on that day, uh, in Cloverdale, seven in Wallace House and 52 on the streets. Um, also want to give a shout out to Reach For Home. Uh, they're, they're based out of Healdsburg, but Rick Cafareta, who is an outreach worker I'm sure a lot of folks know, um, Rick actually leads our efforts up here in Cloverdale. Um, and so he brings guides, several folks, three or four guides who, and are, are folks who've been homeless before are homeless. And, and Rick actually goes out before 5:00 with folks up here usually. So he can get into some of the encampments on the river and places that are really hard to get to that most of us couldn't. Um, and frankly, gets into places that people let him into because they trust him and have known him for years. So Rick just does an amazing job. He, he and a couple of other volunteers handle most of Cloverdale. Um, and I don't even have to worry about it for the most part. I just check in with him later in the day. Um, but the, the rest of the North County will deploy out of Healdsburg, um, at the Day Labor Center. We deploy out of Santa Rosa, uh, Petaluma, Gurnville for West County, and then Sonoma Valley for that area. And that'll go from about 5:00 to 10:00 AM. Um, in the evening, from roughly 3:00 to 7:00, we have the youth count. So we actually do that separately. Uh, because young people, as we know, 18, 19-year-olds, they're not up at 5:00 in the morning by and large. That's what we've learned over the years. They're up around, they're out around 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock. Um, so we actually have youth, about 20 to 25 youth who are homeless or currently homeless, um, lead that effort around the county to get that. And we're able to deduplicate from the morning, um, for that part. And then the next few weeks, we do the surveys, um, pull those back. And then there's about a three-month period of a lot of work on our, our end on getting it all right, uh, before we have to submit it. Last couple of points, uh, the, the street count again, that, that was done last year and coming up. Uh, it is a visual count. So, um, when we do the training, we tell people it's, it's not an interactive count. We don't want to bother folks. Um, sometimes people do want to come up and talk, fine. Um, but by and large, we want to respect people where they're at and, and not bother them. Um, and we do that again while people are still in the shelters, uh, between 5:00 and, and 9:00. Uh, last, uh, kind of couple logistical points that people are asking about the count. Uh, and I'll send, uh, I'll send staff a, uh, updated registration link in case people want to volunteer because it did get updated last week. Uh, volunteers aren't paid. Um, but, uh, the folks, the guides, the folks who are homeless doing the count, they are compensated $15 an hour for their time. Um, and we pay them when they come back. So that's a high level for you of the count. I'm happy to answer other, other points. And, uh, oh, the link is up here. So there's a link in the PowerPoint if anybody would like to register. And if anybody from the council would like to, to do the count, um, feel free to reach out me, to me directly and I'll, I'll get you linked up with, uh, a team to do so.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
I'm gonna open it up to the city council, uh, for questions or staff members. Chief, did you have a, did you want us?
Yeah, I just, uh, it's a song. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Um, on your street count for Cloverdale, you had 52-
Yep.
And seven were in the wall house. Is that 52 in the incorporated city or the zip code of?
That was actually in, um, I'd have to look back at it. I think that was actually in the jurisdiction of-
In the incorporated jurisdiction?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there somewhere where there's a break? I see how the street count's done from the visual count-
Yeah.
And it, it includes several different, uh, parks, vehicles. Is there a breakdown of how that was determined?
A breakdown of how-
Like how many were in the parks, open space?
Yeah, well, we do it by census tract. So it would be on, we, we track it. Um, and I could, I could come back at a later date and, and share with council or, or you, uh, chief, if you'd like, um, kind of specifically where folks are. We, we destroy the tally sheets after, but we have, we know pretty much where they were. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, uh, and, and the maps are actually color-coded when people tally sheet because some of the tracks you'll have, like here's Cloverdale and 10 feet over here is unincorporated. So we have to have people mark off on different sheets where they see somebody. Um, so it's, it's pretty darn accurate, but you know, sometimes there's a mistake of a few, a couple people, but-
Yeah. I, I'm just looking at the numbers and I've been here since August. It seems really high. But again, that's from my perspective from August moving forward.
Yeah.
I don't know what it was prior to that, leading up to that. But, um, that number seems really high for the incorporated city.
Okay, yeah. I, you know, I'll have to double check. It could, that could be the total, uh, that, that might actually be the unincorporated and incorporated. I'd have to look back. I don't have the chart in front of me, but-
It'd be great to meet with you and, and see those-
Absolutely.
And try to figure out.
Yeah. Thinking back on it, it's probably is the, uh, the whole area, but I'd, I'd have to look. I don't have it. All right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Council members?
There's a lot to take in.
Um, go ahead, Mary.
Why did you pick January to do this first? Why January?
By January? Um, we actually HUD mandates, we have to do it in the last 10 days of January. So we have no choice. We have to do it in the last 10 days of January. Um, and so I picked the latest date possible in January to give myself a little more planning. It's always on, we've always done it on a Friday. So it, it either would have been the 24th or 31st. Um, there, there's, it's, it's kind of some weird logic behind that. That, all this is skewed toward the East Coast at times, right? Like easier to count people in New York City or somewhere when it's a, could be a blizzard outside and there's nobody outside, right? They're all in shelters for the most part. Um, so it, it's a little East Coast bias, for lack of a better word. Um, so we only have a choice of doing it over 10 days.
I was just curious, just to, from a, a perspective of in the summer and before the rains hit hard, there seems to be a lot more people down on the river camping. And, um, it just seemed kind of odd to me. I know some guys that actually turned themselves in every winter on all of their infractions, just so they know they're gonna get the 90 days.
Yeah.
And they're gonna get three squares and a roof over their head. So it just seems like it would be, that would be the least amount of people you're gonna find January, late January.
Yeah, it could be. I mean, it's definitely, you'll see, you know, more people will go indoors. Our, our shelters typically have-
That's true. We don't have a shelter, unfortunately.
The shelter capacity is higher in the winter. It's, it's closer right now. It's like running 91, 92% countywide. And it's gonna be lower in the summer when it, so you, so you, you might potentially catch more people outside in the summer, for sure.
I wish we had a shelter.
Yeah.
Thank you, council member Brigham. Uh, Jason?
Yes, uh, council member Brigham gave me an, an idea, just a follow-up question. Do you take any sort of census for those who have been, uh, homeless but are incarcerated during the time in which you give the count?
Yeah, I actually, I, I do what's called an institutional count. So I work with primarily the, the county jail, uh, on that. So I actually ask, uh, what's, uh, Leona, Sergeant Whistler. Um, I send, um, I said, I do this actually for the hospitals and the jail. Um, I get as many hospitals as I can. I can't force them to. But I send them a tally sheet and say, who, give me a count of who says they're homeless and they've been there less than 90 days. If they've been there more than 90 days, they're not considered homeless anymore. But if they just got arrested and they were homeless two days prior, we can count that. So-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, follow-up on that?
Go ahead.
Um, so when you count to people at the hospital and the jail, do you request, uh, information on what town they, or what jurisdiction they feel they belong to?
Uh, not on that one, no. We just, uh, we have about 15, 20 questions we can ask. And after that, people kind of like glaze over a little bit. So, um, we have to just hit the hype, the, what we're required to ask. So, um, sometimes I can get that after, but yeah.
Council member Bagby?
Thanks, Michael. Thanks for coming up here.
Yeah.
So I don't know, were you here when Casey asked his question, um, uh, earlier? And I'm, I'm sure you worked with the Clean River and River Keepers, yeah, about just the, the available, uh, the, the availability of winter shelters right now.
Mm-hmm. Um, so yeah, there is not one up here, obviously, but the closest one would be the Reach For Home, uh, church that is not funded, uh, but they kind of do that on their own. Uh, there's a, currently 184 beds countywide for winter shelters. Um, so that includes some in Sonoma Valley, some in Gurnville, um, some in Petaluma, Santa Rosa. Uh, and then I think St. Paul's, when it hits a certain temperature in Healdsburg, I think 31 is their capacity. Uh, but yeah, there's not currently a winter shelter up here, which could be a gap. So-
And just a, yeah, and just a, just a follow-up on that. Um, uh, so it's, it's just interesting to see on page, um, cause six of your presentation, 26 in our packet, interest in, in permanent housing. It's saying, stating that 89% of the survey respondents said they would like affordable permanent, permanent housing if it became available soon. And I, I'm just wondering, I, I just encounter folks all the time who just are ready to, you know, throw up their hands and dismiss and just say, well, you know, they don't want help. And it's just, by the, according to the survey, that just isn't true. So I'm just, you know, wondering, you know, how do you, when you encounter that kind of an attitude?
Yeah.
You know, um, how do you, how does your organization deal with it?
Yeah, it's something we're working with all the time. I think, you know, there is a continuum, for lack of a better word. So you might catch somebody on one day who's just not in a place to accept or even want to take shelter or housing. Um, we're certainly seeing that along the trail right now, uh, the Joe Rutter Trail. Um, the trick is finding something that's gonna fit their needs, right? Everybody's different. I might talk to 15 people and they're gonna have 15 different needs. Uh, a lot of people have trauma from being sheltered. What I hear a lot is I've been raped, I've been assaulted, I can't go back into a shelter because it's just gonna trigger severe PTSD from being assaulted there. Um, and so they, they don't want to be placed or they might not want to be housed. So, uh, it's, it's persistent outreach is the biggest thing. I think that, you know, I know that, like I referenced Reach For Home earlier, they're, they're coming up here more and more. The more we get outreach and repeated over and over, um, it might be five times, it might be 10 times, it might be the 15th time you find somebody that they're ready to come in. Um, I could speak to that during the Kincaid fires when I was on the trail trying to get people evacuated on the day of the fires. There were a lot of folks who had said no. And then that morning, it was like, okay. Like, but, and, and, but Like, but then I had to say, how do I get you from here to there? I got to get a bus, you know, that's trying to jump through that kind of stuff. But, great question. Yeah.
Okay, members from the public, if you'd step up to the podium and just give your name and share a question with Michael?
Question?
Yeah, just step up to the podium. We'd like your name for the records, please.
Do I sign this?
Yeah, you could just sign that piece of paper there and give us your name and ask any questions you'd like.
Okay. My name is Cheryl Steele, and I just had a question. I went into Sebastopol the other day.
Could you speak into the mic?
I went into Sebastopol the other day, and this is the first time I've seen it. There was just a, I don't know if it was an encampment or not, but it was a solid tents all along the freeway.
Yeah.
So is that a new encampment, and is it permanent, or what is that?
Yeah, we're going to let Michael speak to that. That's, I think, the Joe Wooddota.
I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
That's actually kind of my full-time job right now. So, yeah, that is the encampment on the Joe Wooddota Trail, which is presently almost, I'd say, two-hundred-and-twenty individuals are camps. So, great question. I can say, I've been at the, with what's called the EOC the last two days, the Emergency Operations Center. So the county has activated the EOC in response to the crisis on the trail. So there will be an array of meetings, more meetings, we've had a lot. There will be a community meeting with Supervisor Hopkins on Friday at Roseland Library. The board, again, will, Board of Supervisors will again take this up on Tuesday. And then you probably will see some pretty rapid, additional rapid responses coming. I can't go into all the details, but that is the number-one priority of our office, health services, the entire county right now. So that's the one you're referencing.
But organized state or?
It is, well, the folks who are there kind of have been on that trail a couple times, and it's grown and grown. And there is an injunction against the city of Santa Rosa and the county, a lawsuit that has made things a little more complicated. So we're trying to offer alternatives, and the board has actually authorized, as folks may know, some additional funding to address that. So, great, great question.
Anyone else from the public? Well, Mike, I just have a couple. You know, I look at this chart here on the results, I think it's page twenty-three of the city packet. But, you know, since 2015 to 2019, that count has been hovering right around three thousand. It's almost like we haven't made a dent into it, which is troubling. I know everybody's been working hard to try and figure out what to do here. The other thing is, if your contact points are not interactive, how do you come up with thirty-four percent sheltered and sixty-six percent non-sheltered? Where do you get that? How do you back into that number if you don't talk to them?
So, yeah, I can, I can, let me take the first one first. So, yeah, I think what you note is, we had the deep drop from 2015, where we kind of saw the recession fade down to thirty-one oh-seven. And we were making kind of slow progress. I think the fires really disrupted a lot of stuff, and now it's been, for lack of a better word, finger in the dike almost after the fires to try to keep things where they were and not have a big spike. So, yeah, I think we were making progress, and the fires threw a big wrench into it. In terms of how we get the sixty-six and thirty-four, the sheltered, I think, as I say, is we can get an exact count, so we can call every shelter. The unsheltered is a mix of a couple things, right? It's visual tally sheets, counting every single person that's seen. And then we have, this is getting really technical, so stop me if I get too, getting into the data around this. For cars, tents, things like that, we have multipliers. So that means what we do in November, what we've done in the falls, we go out and actually sample, we interview people in cars, tents, and an average number of people in a tent or a car. And that way, if we see a tent, we're not going to knock on it, but we can say generally there's two-point-seven people, right? That's what it was last year. Or in a car, we can say what we found is like two to three people. So that's how we can get to a number in people where we can't physically see every person. So that's how we get to the unsheltered number. But mostly, it's the raw tally sheets of what people are marking down.
Okay.
And we're going to be doing it by mobile phones this year, actually, so.
By what?
By mobile phones this year. So folks, when they do the count, they'll actually, instead of doing it pen and paper, they'll use their cellular phone to enter directly in the data in. So hopefully, it's going to be even smoother in collecting it.
Okay. And my last question, and actually, Councilmember Turner already addressed it, was the incarceration rate and how that affects the numbers. So I'm glad to see we're tracking that separately. Councilmember Turner, did you have another question?
And we also have, Mayor, we have, we do, I didn't include it here, but we do have, we ask a survey question on people, have they had experience with incarceration? So that's a question. I don't have it here, but can get that to you if you need it.
I just have a quick question. You had mentioned you're able to call the shelters, and then the other ones are visual and non-interactive. Is seeing things like transition age, older adults and unaccompanied children, is it, at this point, a visual assessment? It's your best guess on their age?
Yeah.
Unless, of course, they choose to come speak with you?
Yeah, so we have, you know, the morning of, people can say, well, that person looks like they're eighteen to twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, bucket. But then the surveyors will ask them when they do it, and that's about six hundred surveys.
Because the only thing that comes to mind is sometimes methamphetamines can be a little misleading on age.
Yep.
It just, it might skew the data, but I don't think enough to really change the needle. So, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's a good point. Living outside, it's hard, you know, when I'm going into encampments and talking to folks that somebody might say they're thirty and they look fifty, right, from living outside for a long time. It's just, it's a really rough thing.
Last shot, council members, anything? Public? Well, Mike, Shirley, just come up in, jot down your name.
Shirley Davis, resident, spent years with some of the stuff. When you go to the shelters, don't they have an intake form? Okay, that's what you're gathering it from? Is it intake form or you calling?
No, so I can, I can, I can speak to Michael.
Yep, that'd be great.
Yeah. So it's actually what's called a Homeless Management Information System. It's a database.
Oh.
So people, their info is entered into a database, and we all, we don't even have to call, we just have to, they say, pull the report. And so they can send it over, yeah.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, Michael, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
And continue the good work, and, you know, we're trying to do everything we can on our end from a city standpoint, so.
Thank you. And if I'm not able to be there Tuesday, I'm going to make sure one of my team can be. I'll be at the Board of Supervisors Tuesday during your sub-count, subcommittee meeting, but I'll see if I can get my new lead staff there.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, next on the agenda is the student liaison reports, and we have both student liaisons here today. We have Ashton and we have Emily. So who would like to speak first?
Yeah.
Wait, are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
Okay. Ash, go ahead.
So, since it's the changing of the guard sorts, I would, I thought I'd reintroduce myself. So, I'm Ashton Peterson. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a senior at Cloverdale High School, and I have to say, this has been an enlightening ride so far. I took this position at the behest of my English teacher last year, because, you know, I thought, I like throwing myself into uncomfortable situations. And it has been a wild ride from listening to the deep discussions I thought did not exist at local, at local political levels. And, you know, just trying, struggling to keep up with, as they jump from one topic to the next. But I guess it kind of suited me, because one of my interests is politics, and the other is engineering. I know they're not related at all. Okay. I haven't found a link. But I, it has been a good experience, and I feel like I wanted to take this job, because I've already, I'm already sort of involved in this sort of thing. I am on this student council at my local high school, and I remember when the econo, when the, but when the budget office was up here, so like I know, they mentioned that it's the start of the, everyone's back in school. Yeah, it is, or they are, and it's, I'm trying to be better at my job, and I'm trying to get the council into overdrive as we do our last big project of the year, which is funding a senior trip. And I, yeah.
Where are you guys going?
Uh, right now, we plan to go to Six Flags, and we plan to take a cruise. So we're trying to get everyone to pitch in a hundred and fifty bucks at the tall order, but.
Well, thank you for that report. Emily, did you have anything to report this evening?
Yeah, so we were given the task to just kind of go over our year so far. So the position as a student liaison has been a wonderful opportunity thus far, mainly because of the open-mindedness of our community. After attending one of our local Chamber of Commerce meetings, I was pleasantly surprised by the initiative to welcome newcomers, and most of all, open to, like, new ideas. So this kind of gave me insight to the subcommittee I am most interested. It would be school, obviously, as I have plenty of ideas on how to better the relationship between students, local government, and the community. For example, I would like to implement a direct way for students in particular to learn about community events, local elections, and how to get involved with everything in the community. This could be anything from a website, a social media platform, or absorbing these responsibilities into previously founded school organizations like ASP, which I am a part of, and already talking to the president about getting more information about elections and how to get involved in government out there to kids, because a poster right outside of the bathrooms is not really cutting it. And, yeah, as for my engagement in our community this past year, my position as an intern at our local citrus fair has given me the wonderful opportunity to meet many of the members of this community and participate in this year's citrus fair queen pageant. Much of the work that I do at the citrus fair involves sorting through the history of the town. It's given me quite an overview of how Cloverdale's grown and where it might be going. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you, Emily. And I'll be more than happy to sit down with you and our city manager and maybe address some of those questions that you might have on how to become more active. So I'll make sure that you have my contact information here before you leave this evening, okay?
Thank you very much. Mayor?
Yes.
I did request, I am overseeing these two students, wonderful students, and I did request them to meet with each of us individually. So I'm sure that's going to happen before the year's up. And we will continue to work on civics. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Cruz, for reaching out. Get in touch with me, and we'll sit down with the city manager and come up with a, maybe a schedule and contact information for each one of us. Of course, it's on the website under city council members as well, but if you'd like to sit down, we'll go ahead and do that. Okay? All right, if there's nothing else, let's move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be considered with one vote unless any council member or member of the public wishes to have that item pulled to discuss separately. And we already did actually pull item number six. So the only consent calendar item is number five, the approval of the minutes for December the eleventh.
Motion to approve the amended consent calendar?
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cruz.
I'm.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Thank you, yes. Let's go ahead and discuss item number six separately. The city manager, Kelly, you wanted that pulled, approving the Cloverdale Community Development Successor Agency Obligation Payment Report.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So the item before you tonight is to approve or adopt the resolution that would approve what's referred to as the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, or ROPS, for the next annual period. Council may remember that, at a period of time, there was a local oversight board that reviewed our ROPS. Since that time, the county has now established a countywide oversight board, so all of our ROPS go before the county site, county oversight board. But one of the things that's allowed under the dissolution law of the former redevelopment agency is to request an administrative fee of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The ROPS schedule that's included in your packet identifies an administrative fee of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And that was compiled by our finance director, Susie Holmes, with the assistance of RSG, who is a consultant that assists us making sure that our ROPS meets all of the state requirements, because ultimately, it will be needed to be not only approved by the oversight board, but then submitted to the California Department of Finance. We are anticipating this year, bringing forward, for council's consideration, a possible refunding of the redevelopment bonds. And we anticipate that it may require more time than was expected and identified in terms of how much administrative expenses we may incur during the next annual year. So we're seeking direction for your approval tonight is to, again, adopt the ROPS, but with a slight modification. And for your reference, it's on page fifty-one of your packet. And it's really item, it's the top item, the administration budget, item number eight on the, on the ROPS, you'll see listing a ROPS total for that item of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand to approve it with a modification reflecting a maximum amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. There is no guarantee that we will receive the maximum amount. It could be requested to reduce it by either the countywide oversight board or even the California Department of Finance. But we think we would like to request the maximum amount that we can under redevelopment law. So we're just requesting the council approve and adopt the resolution with the amendment to that particular line item.
Thank you, David. Councilmembers, questions? Well, I think it was great that you went ahead and saw that upcoming expense, and we can get it in Harper now, kind of like a pre-approval. And it doesn't hurt to ask, you know, they may say no, but at least we've asked. Susie, thank you for that adjustment. I know we spoke this afternoon about that, two-hundred-and-fifty as opposed to a hundred-and-fifty. Thank you for seeing that. That was great. Members of the public, is there any questions or comments you'd like to make on this successor agency, ROPS, report? Okay, seeing no one coming up to the podium, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for approval on the resolution, page number forty-seven.
I'd like to recommend the item, by title only.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Yes.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Yes. I'll amend my motion as amended.
Good catch. Communication, there's one letter. I was under the impression that there might be two.
Yes, we did receive another.
Right. And the one letter was from former planning commissioner Shirley Davis, and the other one was from Chris Rhodes. Did that not make it on the dais?
Uh, Mayor, and councilmembers, there was additional correspondence that was received after the agenda packet was published. The council was forwarded a copy of that correspondence, and I think there's a copy available for public review.
Okay.
I don't see that we, in our effort to save paper, we didn't print additional copies, but it was disseminated to council.
And online?
And online. It was, it was, it was published online, and we do have, if there's any members in the community that wanna, wanna, uh, see that correspondence, it is, we do have it available.
Okay. Well, the, um, Cloverdalean by the name of Chris Rhodes expressed his concern about the growing number of homeless along the riverbanks and on the trails. And, um, I have to commend Chief Jenkins, uh, he, I'm sorry, Chief Ferguson. Um, he jumped right on that and, um, got right back, and David did respond, uh, and email back to, uh, Mr. Chris Rhodes. And I think that, uh, will come up, I'm sure, at our Police Finance Subcommittee meeting, so.
And Mayor, if I can, just relative to that correspondence, uh, I did share with, uh, Mr. Rhodes that there is a community advisory group for the homelessness scheduled for, for Tuesday at the, at the, uh, Fire District Headquarters from 1:00 to 3:30. I provided him with a copy of the, uh, agenda, uh, and encouraged him to, you know, to participate in that discussion, uh, that, that it is a public meeting and he's welcome to attend, uh, so that, you know, he could be part of that discussion. Uh, you know, the, part of the concern was, you know, obviously some of the, uh, you know, what was referred to as, you know, encampments, uh, near and adjacent to the river. And, uh, as, as you referred, uh, Mayor, or as you indicated, uh, Chief Ferguson and as well as the Cloverdale Police Department, uh, responded very quickly, uh, and were present on the trail and did an assessment. And that's something we can, we'll speak to in more detail, uh, at the community advisory group meeting on, on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Turner?
So, I, and Jose, you're gonna have to stop me if I get too into this, being as it's not an agendized item, so I'll trust you to put your hand up when I've gone too far. But I, I see a reoccurring, uh, theme in some of these correspondence where individuals, and I'm gonna address you a little bit too, Chief Ferguson, individuals have become frustrated that it is their perception that as law-abiding individuals, they are operating at a disadvantage, and they feel as though, uh, kinda going rogue or taking things their own way is being entertained, allowed. Would it be unreasonable to ask for maybe the next meeting or the next advisory group to just kinda com- compose a report of the challenges that your officers are facing with enforcement? And, and how that translates to individuals who, I don't know how else to put it, view themselves as law-abiding citizens and may look at some of the discrepancies happening as a clear and concise refusal to follow the law, yet at times our officers are hamstrung by, by this, that, or the other. And I don't wanna speculate. I would just like to ask that at a future, uh, time where this discussion is brought up, that might be a talking point that could be helpful.
Yeah, I agree, um, with you on that, and that's certainly something that I can, um, put together to help outline some of that. There are definitely challenges. I understand everybody's concern, um, and that's why we got on it right away. But there are some things that I don't think everybody understands, the challenges with, uh, the recent Supreme Court decision that, um, you know, basically did not overturn the Ninth Circuit Court's decision, which makes it very difficult for us in these circumstances. But I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Bagby?
Just if I may, so I was wondering, Chief, when you did get out into the field and investigate, was it in our jurisdiction or was it, um, in the, in the county?
Um, so, most of what I found was on the east side of the river, which would be on the county side. And I do, I do believe in some of the, um, correspondence that we received, there may not be a clear understanding of what those jurisdictional lines are, including myself when I got here. Um, but that was part of the reason of going out there immediately. I myself went out the following morning to take pictures and videotape and then got in the UTV and actually drove the entire track, got out and looked, um, to what was being reported, and there was nothing, um, there. I'm not saying it wasn't there. Um, whatever happened was not there at the time. So, um, we just wanted to make the effort to go out there and be visible and see what exactly is being reported. A lot of it was on the county side, which is also why I brought up on these numbers that are reported. I think there is potential that the people who come across from the county into our community during the hours where the counts are being done, um, aren't being asked. So, those are probably being tallied as Cloverdale, um, homeless counts. So, that's something to be, I'd like to talk to him further and find out if that's in fact happening.
Just a follow-up, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So, and, and I, I think, you know, what I'm hearing and what we've heard tonight is a lot of frustration with, um, with the, the difference between perception and reality and jurisdiction, with things that we can control as a council and things that we have to work with the county on or, you know. So, I, I guess, you know, and I think I'll address this further in future agenda items at the end, but it just seems to me that, um, just in the last, since I've, since I became, um, a council member, I have learned, uh, so much about so many topics, but homelessness and the complexities around it is, is one of the really big juggernauts that you have to get your, your mind around when you are a policymaker. And you almost learn more about what you can't do than what you can do. So, I think it really, we're at a point in this community where there's, um, a lot of miscommunication. Uh, there's a lot of good information on social media, there's a lot of just ranting and raving on social media and repeating of just propaganda, things that aren't true. And we, we have the facts, we have the reports from the county census, we have the census coming up. We know, um, that, that, you know, continuum of care methodology is, um, is, is happening in the county, and that is what we have signed on for, to address some of these issues. And I think at this point, what we can do as local policymakers is help to educate the public. And so, I, I'd like to see us maybe, I don't, um, we can talk about it more later tonight, but doing a, doing maybe either a series of workshop or frequently asked questions or especially once we've gone through the, um, the, the whole, the series of homeless, homelessness workshops and strategic plan that we're, we're, we're doing is get that information out to the public so that they understand exactly what it is we can do, what we are doing, and where we are maybe, um, hamstrung in some, in some other areas. So, I'd like to, just as response to that correspondence, it's just really clear that people are very frustrated, and they need the council to take a leadership role in getting the information into their hands that they can use so that we can make some effective change.
Okay. Councilmember, I'm sorry, um, David, did you, did you have, um, you were gonna say?
Mayor, Councilmember, I, I was just gonna respond to, uh, Vice Mayor Turner's comments and speak to the, uh, community advisor group agenda for, uh, Tuesday, uh, the 14th. The, the primary purpose, uh, for the agenda is to review the vision, goals, and strategies for the strategic plan. Uh, one of the key goals that's identified within the framework is, um, public safety. And I think that's an area where, uh, both our, our police department, police chief, as well as the Sonoma County Sheriff's Department will, will, will wanna weigh in, uh, on some of the specific strategies and tactics that are gonna be included in the, or anticipate will be included or recommended to be included in the draft strategic plan, uh, to address some of the public safety issues. Uh, and so, uh, you know, obviously, uh, we can't treat homelessness as a crime, uh, but there are, uh, you know, some, some strategies and tactics that, uh, can be employed, uh, by the city and our police department to ensure that, um, you know, we, 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 uh, address public safety. And, and I think, uh, you know, we wanna do that in a, in a humane way, uh, and in a way that's, that's lawful. Uh, and that's, um, you know, that, it, it, it's a little bit tricky, and, and we'll, we'll try to work that out, uh, through, through the planning process so that, in a way that the community can support. So, I just wanna ensure that, that, that's, that's something we were gonna be doing as part of this planning process.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, um, just to, uh, reiterate that it is very important that the citizens of Cloverdale do take an initiative to participate of as many public meetings as possible, and also to come to council with their concerns. Um, in the next homelessness, uh, committee meeting, there is going to be a decision of a date for a public, uh, participation meeting. And, uh, I'm hoping that we can, uh, disseminate this information as much as possible through as many ways as possible so that we could get true participation from, uh, people who are frustrated and people who are concerned and people who have anything that they can contribute towards this, uh, issue. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Jose, do I get a turn, or you're gonna cut us off?
No, 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 actually, I was, I was going to mention, Mayor, that, that although we were in communications, um, this item was actually agendized, it's item number three, so it's kind of us going back since there was a homeless count, so the conversation on the homeless, that's why I didn't raise my hand earlier.
Oh, good. I thought I was going pretty deep into it, and you were over there all quiet.
Well, well, thank you, Jose, because, because I do have something to say on this. And, and you know, staff and, and Chief Ferguson, if you could just close your ears for a minute, you know, uh, Councilmember Bagby, you hit it right on the head. You know, we are the elected officials, we are the politicians, and quite frankly, 95425 is on the east side and the west side of the river. And when there's an encampment on the east side of the river, we have to be able to act on it. I know it's out of our jurisdiction, but we need to get the sheriff's department up here and say, hey, how far can we go over there to do this? Or can you keep a sheriff up here two days a week to help us patrol that east bank? Uh, but we, as policy and, and elected officials, the public could care less whether it's the east side or the west side of the river. They want that situation handled, and we're not doing it. And we let the geographical lines get in the way. So, that's my two cents, and hopefully we'll talk more about that on Tuesday.
One last thing, if it's okay, and you gotta stop putting things in my head to ask about, but we generated an MOU, I'm led to believe, with the county of Sonoma, for any, uh, investigational needs that may go above and beyond what, um, our, our city police force might be able to handle. I believe it was written under the guidance of, uh, former police chief Stewart. Um, is this something where we can engage that contract? This has obviously become an issue that has, has gone beyond, uh, just, uh, seeing it at face value and being able to address it. It's, it's, it's jumped into people using the term chronic, and chronic suggests repetition. Is that something that can initiate this MOU where we have some level of, of cost structure and, and some level of, uh, of, uh, authority to say, uh, like I heard, some regularity in, in the patrols and, and things of that nature?
Mayor, council, if you'd like me to address that request? Uh, I, I think that's something that we would really want to, uh, study in more detail and bring back for, for, uh, a very specific direction from council on that MOU. The MOU was really drafted, uh, for, for a different purpose. I think it was related to, again, uh, criminal activity. Uh, some of the, uh, issues that we confront with homelessness, um, are, are not, are not criminal.
Correct.
And, and so, uh, i- to engage the sheriff's office in criminal investigations, uh, relative to homeless issues, I, I think may not be, uh, the best use of our, uh, limited public funds for that purpose. Uh, and, uh, I, I, we, I think we realized, you know, time is of the essence, uh, and we really do need to engage with our, our sheriff's office in some, you know, some joint planning around the issue. Uh, and that's something I know our, our chief is committed to, and, and really making sure we, we, we understand the issue. Because I, I, I think I've, I've referred to this as, is that there's a, there's a little bit of a whack-a-mole effect, uh, in that, you know, I, I think what you're seeing in terms of this activity that's being reported is actually a result of the sheriff's office, uh, doing more enforcement, uh, in the unincorporated area, which is then pushing, uh, folks, because they're, they don't have any place to go, coming more into Cloverdale City proper. And so, again, there's, there's that push and pull response. Uh, and so, we, we, we wanna be very careful, I think, in terms of engaging strictly a law enforcement perspective. Uh, and, and, you know, that's why all those, we have to look at this as a big picture. What are those other strategies that we're gonna engage in terms of outreach services, uh, getting, uh, getting folks to available housing, available shelter, uh, getting those services out there? And, you know, it all has to be, uh, part of that bigger puzzle that we're putting together. Um, it, it's, it's, it's challenging, and, and law enforcement has a role to play. I don't wanna say that.
No, no, I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
And, and I think our, our police department has been active in finding, uh, uh, you know, those people that are maybe hanging out and they're bad actors, uh, and, and, you know, taking appropriate action. So, um, uh, I, I, I think, I think we'll have more discussion through the, uh, both the regional planning effort, uh, through, supported by Supervisor Gore, but also our, our local planning committee. Uh, obviously, we need to move, move as quickly as we can. Uh, there's also gonna be a number of, of, uh, actions by the county that are gonna be announced, uh, maybe as soon as tomorrow, uh, about what they're gonna be doing, particularly around the Joe Redota Trail. And those are all things that we have to kinda, uh, figure out how we, 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 uh, participate in that, in that solution around, around, around homelessness.
And, and, and let me just make it clear, when I said, you know, we should, uh, 95425, we should just jump the river, I, I, you know, we don't jump it without a, a, a pre-agreed upon reimbursement from the county, um, you know, somehow, I don't know what that is. Chief, you're jumping at the bit.
Well, I just, I just wanna make a comment. I certainly echo what, uh, city manager David said. Um, I do wanna add that, um, law enforcement is just one component to this bigger picture. We're not the sole solution to it. We're certainly a part of trying to come up with solutions. Uh, when I indicate about the jurisdiction lines, it's not meant to be that it's their side versus our side. I certainly understand, just like I mentioned in the beginning, I wasn't even 100% sure of the jurisdictional lines when I moved here until I figured them out. Um, I do see it as a, a very large problem that, um, needs to be addressed by both sides. But as the chief of this, uh, city, I certainly have to understand what we're looking at from the perspective of the incorporated city that I'm responsible for. So, if I said anything to that man, that's entirely what I was meaning by it, but I do understand it's a, it's a bigger picture, but law enforcement is just one component. There's financial aspects to it, certainly resource as- aspects to it, um, and programs the aspect to it too, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Brigham? And then we're gonna wrap this topic up.
Well, I've been digging fairly deep in this issue for quite a while now, for over a year. And I think the public expects a solution when there isn't one. There, we are not going to sit at that meeting next Tuesday, or next month, or next year. This is literally gonna take years to solve. It's housing, it's mental health, it's all of that. What we have to figure out as a community is how we're gonna take the pieces that are around us and available to us and how to manage it. We are not going to solve this like we would solve a math problem. Uh, the chief is right. You know, we've got so many different components there to deal with, and we've all got our ideas on how we can do it. And I think we just have to wait and go through this. I would like to speed it up a little bit because of the fires and everything else. It's gotten put on the back burner. I was hoping we would have some things in place for this winter, which we never did. Um, and I apologize for that, 'cause we should have had something in there. Um, but I really hope that we do get some public involvement at these meetings, and I hope some of the homeless show up and give their side of things. But, um, this isn't an easy fix, nor is it gonna be, we, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, California may have enough housing, but right now, we do not, and we don't have enough mental health. Uh, there's a, I could give you a list, but we have to sit down as a community and as a council and figure out how we personally are going to manage it in this community for the benefit of the whole community.
Thank you. With, with that, I'm gonna close that and we're gonna move along, if that's okay?
Yeah, but I don't think you have to leave just yet. Um, we're on the sub.
No, we're, we're actually on subcommittees. Um, does anyone need a break, or can we keep plowing along for a little bit? Okay, let's plow along. Uh, next item is, uh, discussion and direction on draft, uh, city council 2020 Subcommittee, Joint Committee, and Regional Board Committee, Committee Appointments. Uh, city manager?
Mayor, council, uh, just a, a brief overview. At your December 11th meeting, um, the city staff provided to council, uh, preference ranking forms for, uh, regional boards as well as, uh, council subcommittees. Um, at the time, council, uh, discussed briefly, well, reviewed and discussed briefly, uh, those, uh, the Subcommittee, Joint, Joint Committee, and Regional Board Appointments. Uh, and also as part of that discussion, uh, meeting times, um, and meeting dates, as well as, you know, whether to look at opportunities for maybe combining some of the roles of the Subcommittee. Uh, ultimately, uh, council members provided their, uh, preferences back in terms of the ranking sheets, which were then compiled and are presented in your packet. Uh, I, I did, uh, do my best to, uh, adhere to the criteria that's provided for in your general report, uh, by, uh, you know, making every effort to assign, uh, council members to at least one of their top choices. Obviously, that's challenging if there's, uh, three, three members of council who want to, who indicate a preference to, to sit on one Subcommittee, uh, but also to provide for some continuity in committee memberships by having one of the former, uh, Subcommittee members continue in their role, uh, going forward, uh, and to also a- attempt to, uh, ensure some equal workload among, amongst the coun- council members. Uh, the, again, the draft ranking worksheets, uh, are provided for your review and for your reference, uh, that's page, uh, 61 and 62 of, of your packet, uh, and, well, and 63 and 64. Uh, and these, these really are, the recommendations that are provided for your review are, are really just a starting point, again, based on my best effort to, to take your preferences and put, and, and utilizing those criteria, uh, to, uh, fill your Subcommittee roles. Um, so, uh, staff's recommendation tonight is for council to finalize the recommended So, staff's recommendation tonight is for Council to finalize the recommended appointments, make any changes that you see fit to the meeting dates and times, including a decision whether you would like to collapse or modify the proposed committee structures. For example, Council did discuss on December 11th whether to add Airport to the, as kind of a Subcommittee under Public Works, and we can refer to it as, you know, the Public Works and Airport Subcommittee, or just leave it as Public Works. We've also received a request from Vice Mayor Turner to look at whether to establish a new Subcommittee around the issue of sustainability, and that may be something that Council would like to consider in that regard. And a little bit of background on that, you know, the Council took action on a climate resolution that set forth a work plan for various climate-related measures and sustainability measures. The direction of Council at that time was to assign that to the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee. One thought, just for Council's consideration as part of this overall discussion, might be to reframe or re-title the Planning Subcommittee to, you know, Planning and Sustainability as one way to address that so that there's not another standing committee. But again, that's your perspective. You could certainly determine tonight it's in the best interest to establish, you know, an additional Subcommittee. The only cautionary note there is these are Brown Act Subcommittees, which means agendas, minutes, staff time, Council member time, and to extend that, you may want to consider that as part of your discussion. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions Council may have about the recommendations that were presented in your packet, and happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, David. I think the way I'd like to approach this is not looking at who's on what committee. Let's see if we want to restructure first. Do we want to slide the Airport into the Public Works? Do we want to put a new category under Planning CDA for the climate issue? How exactly do we want to handle that? Any thoughts on that?
I think the Airport could go under Public Works very easily. I think that would be smart.
So, I like the idea of not creating another Subcommittee, which would require the addition of staff time. I really appreciate that we're trying to be as conscious as possible of the directives that we give staff and not to kind of bog them down with some of the other stuff. So I would also agree that to add sustainability as part of the existing Planning and Community Development, as well as what Councilmember Brigham said, adding Airport to a standing item on the Public Works, I would support both of those initiatives.
Thank you.
Fire District, or the Joint Cloverdale Fire, that's only, we only meet every four months on that one.
Where would you see it fitting?
Public Works.
I'm okay with that. We'll just load Mark.
I don't know about that.
I have a...
First of all, and the reason, I'm not too sure about that. Excuse me, Councilmember Cruz. That's another agency coming in to meet with us. We control the Airport agenda, we control the Public Works agenda, we don't control the Fire District. So it's an outside agency.
It's sort of like the School District. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I wasn't thinking about that.
Councilmember Cruz?
However, we have had some informal discussions about perhaps having a public safety where we have the police and the Fire District invited, and if they come, and if they don't come.
That does make a little bit of sense.
You know?
Well, yeah. You know, the only thing I can say, you know, is I'm sure the Chief could come to the Joint Fire District Subcommittee. I don't know that we need to start a new committee for public safety.
No, 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 I'm not saying it's just to have that with, to have police and Fire together and have administration alone. Because the thing is that the Fire District, they really work on their own, and they don't participate with anything, and they don't really include us in any kind of communication. So it's just a formality, a courtesy.
So, I'm not quite clear exactly what you're looking for when we're all done with this. Where do you envision that committee fitting for that?
Well, I was just thinking of having public safety, having police and Fire together, and have administration by itself. And even though it's an independent entity, just like the School...
I do have something to discuss.
Okay, go ahead.
And I hope I add to the discussion. And I'm a little torn about, I'm a little torn, and it's regarding, yes, the Fire District and the School District are separate entities, and traditionally, we've had separate meetings. But there, it could be an argument made for putting the Fire District meetings under police and finance, and here's why. Is that more and more, the, well, the Cloverdale Fire District is applying for several grants to address wildland urban interface and to, you know, keep the hillside safe. And there is, I think there's going to be more overlap between helping to keep Cloverdale safe as well as protecting the hillsides that are in their, that are in the county or in their jurisdiction. So I could see the possibility of it being helpful that, because it's only quarterly, that we, maybe you could schedule it like I see us scheduling the Airport issues, is that it's only quarterly, it can be planned, it can, we can plan the agendas so that they're slightly lighter on the days, that it would, the Fire District would be held jointly with police and admin. Hopefully, I'm making sense. So I mean, there's an argument to be made that there needs to be more partnership, and it's really around public safety and fire safety. So I'm, and I'm a little divided about it because there's the advantage of having that separate meeting because they're a separate entity. But I'm just saying that there's, there needs to be more crossover. We need to be working with the district far more closely on our public safety issues, especially around resiliency, evacuation planning, and public safety issues around PSPs and possible, you know, further fire events. So that's kind of, I'm a little torn about whether or not they should remain separate, or maybe we could do them quarterly in our, in the police Subcommittee.
And I don't have a problem with that, but of course, we'd have to clear that with the Fire District, make sure that they're on board with that, coming, you know, coming to a monthly meeting. And then, secondly, you know, we just want to double-check with staff. I know there's a lot of times when we have a lot of finance issues coming up.
Well, I wouldn't have them, that's the difference, Gus. I wouldn't have them come to that monthly meeting. I'd have them come quarterly and have it be at that same, at the same time as police and Fire. And we'd probably, it'd be, exactly, just agenda is once a quarter.
And, Mr. Mayor, also, I had one meeting with the Fire District upon my initiative. So, you know, they could be invited on that quarterly meeting, and it's for them to come or not.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, there, you know, I have no problem trying it. They're a separate agency. They don't answer to the city. They do whatever they want.
Exactly.
I mean, yeah, well, we can't even get them to come down on the issue of fireworks. I mean, they do what they want to do, so. Councilmember Turner?
So, the only last little caveat is, the way that the Subcommittee is currently named is Joint City Cloverdale Fire District. Chief Ferguson is a member of our city. You could be an everyday player. If we have the meeting scheduled, you are invited and would be, with all due respect, expected to be there or a proxy.
Jose?
So, just one, and we were sidebar-ing here a little, because it's the Joint City Cloverdale Fire District. I mean, that does, it's not just our members, they also have members.
Board members.
To that, to that committee. And I think this goes to the point of, you know, there's finance and administration, it's not really something that they would be involved in. I know it's separate, but it's separate kind of like the Joint City Cloverdale Unified School District, just because there's other members that we have to keep in mind. You can definitely have the same members that you have in your finance and administration and police be the same members you have in the Joint City Cloverdale Fire District, and just have a joint meeting if you wanted both of them come together. Just throwing out ideas. I don't know if, you know, it just gets a little complicated to just throw, to just throw Fire in your other, because you're still going to have the joint, the joint piece of it.
Well, I kind of like Councilmember Cruz's idea of just taking out Joint City, almost make it like Joint Police-City-Fire District, and continue to do it on a quarterly basis, rather than throwing it up top. Because actually, there's going to be three people that are going to have to come to that meeting. It's usually the Chief Jenkins and his two board members that come. So we've got to coordinate all that together. And they don't meet with us a lot of times because they just don't have anything to discuss. It would be nice if we got an update from them once in a while, but we don't do that neither.
And just as, can I just give an example?
Absolutely.
Sorry to belabor this, but just to give an example, if we were co-applicant with them on a, for instance, a fire safety grant, then we would need to set this up. So I guess, I'm not, maybe we don't need to do this tonight, but maybe leave it open as a possibility as something that we could do in the future. Because if we do end up working with them, being, like, writing a grant with them, or being a co-applicant with them on, you know, fire safety at Porterfield Creek, something like that, then it might just be necessary. Then they might be interested in coming and seeing us on a quarterly basis, so.
That's a good point.
Okay, so is everybody in agreeance with that, that we're going to leave the Joint Fire District-City separate, and we're going to ask Chief Jenkins, I'm sorry. I don't know why I want to do that, Chief Ferguson, Chief Ferguson to join us at that meeting. If I remember in the past, most of the time, the police chief was there.
It, Mayor, Councilmembers, it was largely dependent on the agendas. And remember, there's two board members from the Fire District.
Yeah.
That are voting members of that committee. So, you know, to join those two, you're asking for two board members of the Fire District to now serve as voting members on our finance, admin, and police.
Yeah.
And I guess I'd feel a little concerned about that if I was at the Council, but, you know, you're obviously welcome to.
Well, I think we're going to keep it separate now.
Oh, no, I wouldn't do that.
So we will keep it separate.
Okay.
Okay, so we're okay in keeping that separate? Does that make you happy?
Well, I'm not going to be there.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. How about the Airport? Was everybody happy with moving it down to the Planning CDA?
No, Public Works.
Okay, Public Works, I'm sorry. And sustainability, we're going to move that into, we're going to make that a topic under Planning CDA?
Correct. If it's okay with the Mayor and Council, maybe we can rename that Subcommittee to really represent that it's, one of its key work tasks is sustainability. Maybe we call it the Planning and Community Sustainability Committee.
And Development.
I like it, yeah.
Yeah, Planning and Development kind of are synonymous in a lot of respects, so that's why I thought, you know, Planning and Sustainability kind of has a nice ring to it.
Sure.
And also could be reflective of the work plan for that Committee.
Okay. Well, then, if everybody's in agreeance on those changes? Oh, Mark, sorry.
Also, I would like to recommend that if you're going to move the Airport into Public Works, you might as well call it Public Works and Facilities, because the Airport is only one facility of many facilities that the city manages.
Well, you're the one that usually is at the Airport. I mean, you're driven, you're driving that agenda, so you may as well do it all in one shot. Okay, so then we're going to go ahead and change some names. Did staff get all those name changes?
Yes.
Okay, and so, Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Brigham, you're going to be scratched from the Airport. And now, let's move on to the appointments and who's being recommended for what. Do you want to take these one at a time, or do you want to go by the individuals? Let's go one at a time, okay? So the first one is the Finance and Adminis, yeah, we kept that the same, the Finance and Administration and Police Subcommittee. And that looks like it's going to be, Councilmember Bagby and myself is what's being recommended. But Councilmember Brigham, I know you've wanted to sit on that for a while. I've sat on that Committee for two years.
I sat on it for a lot of years.
Do you want to sit up there? And I'll be more than happy to recuse myself from that position.
No, you guys go ahead.
I won't hear any complaining later.
No, I'm not going to complain later, no.
Okay, all right. So, Councilmember Bagby, are you okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay. Next is the Planning CDA, and what we have there is myself and Councilmember Brigham. And, you know, let's take Public Works first. That, we have Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Turner. And I want to make sure that our city engineer and Public Works Director is okay, and that Councilmember Cruz is okay sitting on that same Committee, because again, we have a perceived conflict by the public.
There's no financial interest in this arrangement.
That's not, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about a perceived conflict.
I don't see any conflict.
You don't, and I'm not concerned about what you see.
No, but we have to think of elected officials making decisions for the community.
You know, that's only part of it. But, Mark, are you okay with that?
I'm referring to the city attorney.
Mr. City Attorney?
And I think, Mayor, you mentioned it, I don't think you're referring to a legal conflict.
I am not.
I think you're referring to perception. But as far as legally goes, there's no legal conflict and items coming up, but I think you're dealing more with perception, correct?
Well, perception and potential lawsuits, I guess. But if you're comfortable with it, I'm fine with it if the rest of the Council's fine with it. I don't want to hear any complaints later that you two are separating because of an argument that started at that Subcommittee meeting, so.
Believe me, the last thing I want to address is Public Works at home.
Okay, all right. Council, are you okay with that?
And, Mr. Mayor, and for the community, I am a very competent individual. I'm a leader in this community. I am appointed to a water workshop for the next six months at the state level, and it is very important that what I learn in that Committee and in that seminar comes home. And that is the best Committee where I can serve the community of Cloverdale.
Okay, and thank you for that clarification, but once again, I'm talking about not your abilities, I'm talking about the perception of the community.
I think the community at this point needs to be able to learn with what is the competence of this Councilmember.
Unfortunately, it's not looked at that way. Councilmember Cruz. End of subject. We're going to move it along.
Mr. Mayor, if you insist. Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I just may be, may I point out that we need to, we have been asked by the voters to deal in facts and to lead. And the fact is, is that it's been stated by the city attorney, we've been advised by the city attorney, that there is no conflict of interest because there is no financial interest, and I think we need to move this conversation forward.
And I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to, that's Councilmember Cruz. So you're okay with it, you're okay with it. Let's leave Public Works alone. Go back to Planning CDA.
But I want to make one final point. If I were not confident and sure that I could perform, I would have never requested to be on that Committee.
I'm sure you would, and thank you for that input.
And we need to...
I'm going to get the last word in, but go ahead.
But you need to, the thing is, you could get the last word as you wish, sir. However, we need to start educating and instructing our community. We cannot continue to push forward ideas and not facts.
And I appreciate that input. Unfortunately, or fortunately, they vote for us, you know, they educate us, we don't educate them. Okay, Planning, Planning CD, we, look, it's the perception of the community, it's not what you want.
Well, they can recall me.
Planning CDA Subcommittee, it's myself and Councilmember Brigham. Mary Ann?
I'm good.
Okay, everybody else okay with that?
Yep.
All right. Public Works, we've addressed. Joint City Fire District Police, we're going to leave that with Councilmember Brigham and Councilmember Turner?
I'm fine with that, yes.
Okay. Joint School and City, we have Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Turner?
Yeah.
Okay with that? Okay. On the regional levels, page 63, and, nope, actually, it's not page 63, it's page... not page 63, it's page 64.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four. And Melanie, you're, Councilmember Bagby, you're carrying most of the load here, so please speak up if you're not comfortable with anything. The-
Well, I got myself elected as chair to two of these boards, so I'm kind of stuck with it.
Stuck, I'm, okay.
Yeah.
So, the Cloverdale Chamber is Councilmember Turner and myself. You okay?
Yeah.
The senior-
Sir, I would like to make a correction that I was not the alternate last year, but I became the alternate, so Turner was the first one, David, to clarify that.
Yep, thank you. Senior Senate, we have Councilmember Brigham.
I'm good.
You're good with that? And Jason, you're the alternate?
Yes, you did.
Councilmembers?
I'm sorry, I was having some clarification. I was not under the impression that I was the alternate last year, and I think I mistakenly strong-armed myself into the liaison position, so-
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
That was 2019, we're now in 2020.
We're now in 2020.
So, it's going-
I can have your official-
So, now it's going to be Councilmember Turner and myself. The senior senate, we already said was going to be Councilmember Brigham and Councilmember Turner. The planning commission liaison, Councilmember Cruz and myself?
This is one where I, I do enjoy being the liaison for the planning commission, and if there is someone who may not have necessarily made this as their top priority, but wound up on it, I'd be happy to take it over. But if both parties intentionally and are happy with this appointment, I realize I need to step away from a year and I will try again next year.
Say no more, it's yours. I, I attend all the meetings anyhow, and I usually practice good manners of sitting in the audience silently and not influencing how the planning commissioners are going to say anything. So, I'll still be attending, but Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Turner, it's all yours.
Thank you.
Let me see, oh, Cloverdale Rancheria, that's Councilmember Cruz, Councilmember Brigham?
Yes?
Okay.
I'm the alternate. We haven't had a meeting in years.
Okay.
I, I had three meetings with them this year.
You did?
Yes.
And why didn't you call me?
Because it's an alternate.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I understood that alternate means that if I cannot attend, you attend.
Yeah, but I need to be updated, and so I, in case you do need to not come.
Did, was staff with you on those?
No, just me.
Okay, all right. I think they were just social meetings.
No, they were not social meetings, they were meetings about the, the situation of Cloverdale Rancheria. But then again, I understood, so please clarify, Mr. Mayor, Jose, and David, what does alternate mean then?
Well, I'm not, I'm not complaining about the, the, I just always, if I'm chair of a committee and you're my alternate, say, I always either email you, or we call you and say, this is what we talk about, this thing, just in case. I'm not being critical, just saying that it's really helpful if you're an alternate to be brought up to date.
Okay. I would do so in the future, however, that hasn't been the practice on this council for the last year.
I appreciate it if you would, that would be very nice.
I will.
Because then if you can't come and I need to fill in for something, I know what you've already said.
Council, council, I'm sorry.
But I still would like to know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I'm going to ask him right now, because, and I know, Councilmember Cruz, that you're not making any commitments on behalf of the city going one-on-one. But Jose, could you give a clarification of alternate?
Yeah, the alternate position is really exactly what was said. When, when the, the main person on that committee can't make it, then they would have the alternate show up to cover the, the meeting. That's what usually an alternate, an alternate would do.
Okay.
Am I misunderstanding this? For 2019 appointee, I showed Brigham as the non-alternate, and the information here suggests Cruz is the alternate for 2019. Was that typoed?
No, that was, that was why I was sort of startled.
Can we move forward, or do we want to hash this around some more?
No, no, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't-
Do these meetings with the Cloverdale Rancheria have to be agendized?
And David, this is a question, I don't think we've, we don't, we haven't agendized these because they haven't been, it's just more of the, the folks that meet whenever, it's kind of an ad hoc, whenever they, these come up.
Okay, so Councilmember Cruz can meet, well, wait a minute, who's the, Councilmember Cruz can meet with them anytime she wants, correct?
Yeah, I mean, as, as a council member.
Yeah.
She could, she could call meetings as far as reporting back, though I think that the structure of setting up the, the main person was to provide kind of some continuity of who's going to be the representative.
Okay.
And my, my being startled was the fact that she was the alternate last year, and so to have meetings without contacting me.
Well, it was not meetings as in terms of city meetings and rancheria. As a council member, I wanted to make sure that if I am appointed to anything, either primary or alternate, that they get to know who I am and that I get to know who are the members of those committees, just like with the, with the fire district. We never had a meeting, but I took the initiative to go and meet with, with the chief, and I did the same thing.
I get it. I'm just saying it's nice to contact whoever runs the committee normally to let them know that, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, okay, I will.
But, yeah, I, I talk to the guys at the rancheria a lot. I see them in the grocery store, I see them here, I see them there. But that's not a formal meeting.
Okay, let's move on. Where the hell are we? Oh, here we are. Cloverdale Regional Library Advisory Board, that's Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Cruz, okay? League of California Cities, that's Mayor Bagby. League of California Cities Redwood Empire Legislative Committee, that's also Councilmember Bagby.
Mayor, may we, may we add that I'm also in, in the legislation committee for community development with the northern-
We don't add it here, we don't put in the leg-
We don't put it here.
No, you'll put it here, no.
But that's another thing that I'm going to be doing, and it's going to be telling.
Okay, Le-, um, Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Control District, that looks like, again, Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz is the alternate, okay? Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, REMF, that's Finance Director Holmes, and the alternate is City Manager Kelly. Russian River Watershed, Watershed, that's Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz. Sonoma County Department of Health Services and Health Action Council, that's Councilmember Cruz, along with the alternate is Councilmember Brigham, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Let's get a little yes or no, okay? The Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Legislative Committee, that's going to be Councilmember Bagby and myself as the alternate. Sonoma County Open Space District Advisory Board, we don't have any appointments there. Sonoma County Transportation Authority and Regional Climate Protection Authority, that's Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz. Then we have Zero Waste, Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Sonoma Marin Rail, we don't have anything there. Sonoma Clean Power, we have Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Bagby, I'd just like to say thank you for continuing in those positions, okay?
Here, here.
There's a lot of knowledge there. Next is the, the meeting dates, I don't know if we have to go through that on page 65. Why don't we take a look at those, and then if you have any concerns, you can get a hold of our city manager.
Mayor, members of council, if I can, just so council's aware, this will, we'll bring this back for final council consideration by resolution, because the municipal code requires that the meeting dates and times be established by the council by resolution. So, now would be kind of the time to identify if there is any recommended meeting dates or, or changes in time. We did try to make every effort, as noted, in the schedule to reflect where there were changes from the regular scheduled meetings, you know, due to conflicts with, with the holiday or other type of event as best as we could. If, there, there is always the opportunity to cancel a meeting and/or schedule a special meeting, though those do require that, for, for those meetings that are canceled, you know, formal posting of a cancellation notice, and if there's a, a separate meeting date scheduled, then scheduling a special, is what we refer to as special meeting, to ensure compliance with, with the Brown Act. And so, that's why we, we bring this forward, because this will be part of the resolution that we bring back with identifying the members that you've, you've recommended tonight and those meeting dates, times, and locations.
Thank you, then I stand corrected. Let's flip to page 65 and run down these real quick.
I have one problem right off.
Okay, the airport is, is done, we don't have to worry about that. Finance and Administration, that's the fourth, Thursday, 4:00 PM monthly, I'm okay with that. Planning Community Development, that's the third, Tuesday, 4:00 PM bimonthly. And then Public Works is also bimonthly on the fourth, Tuesday. Now, that's at 10:30 in the morning.
Yeah, that, that's a typo, should be, should be, they're currently at 4:00 PM. Yeah, 4:00 PM is-
Okay, so, so it's not 10:30, it's 4:00 PM?
Right.
Okay. Next, we have the Joint City Cloverdale Fire District, that's the second Monday, 5:30 every fourth month.
And I can't do that one. I already have a board meeting on Monday at, from 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay.
So, maybe we could put, Jason, do you want to be the go-to on that one?
Sure.
And I'll just go off that.
Sure, that sounds fine.
Okay, so then we-
Sounds like you're okay with that, I mean, I don't want to take anything away from you. We can change the time if you want.
No.
Well, we think, that's their time.
It's their time.
Oh, forgive me, okay, that's, yeah, that's the aspect I'm missing, okay.
If we could change it, I would, but I've been on that board for years, and I'm not going to leave it.
I'll jump, I'll jump on that one with you, Jason. So, David, could we make that change, change?
We'll note that-
Brigham?
On page 62, the recommended council appointments for the joint city fire district is Walter and Turner.
Sounds good. Back to page 64. The Joint City School District, that's the third Monday, 5:30 bimonthly, only during the school year.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. That make you happy, David?
Fine with me, council.
Okay, good.
It's your prerogative.
Okay. So, we covered all of that. And the next item is item number nine, it's approval of a one-time payment of $1,000.
I need to introduce my-
For unaffiliated employees, city manager, assistant city manager, community development director, chief of police, finance director, city engineer, public works director, city clerk, and Councilmember Cruz, you can be excused.
Mayor, I, we will go ahead and, and handle this item. The, the item before you is really a follow-up item to, to one of your resolutions on December 11th. If you remember on, on last month, the council adopted a series of resolutions approving updated MOUs with the three recognized employee associations, one resolution approving the updated compensation plan for the unaffiliated employees, and a cost of living adjustment for your city manager and senior staff. The main concept of labor negotiations, the main idea with labor negotiations for this council was kind of treating folks equally. I know that when talked about kind of the COLAs, the, the COLAs were basically the 5% over the two years, whether it was 2.5 and 2.5, or whether it was 3% and then 2%. All the MOUs also included a one-time $1,000 payment for employees. That was also supposed to be part of the, the resolutions for the unaffiliated employees and for your city manager and senior staff in order to treat everybody the same. The finance, actually, the financial impact on the staff reports for the unaffiliated employees resolution and your senior staff resolution even contemplated the $1,000. It was just not put into the resolutions themselves. The attached resolution would provide the one-time payment of $1,000 for your unaffiliated employees, which are three employees, and your city manager and senior staff, which are six employees, for a total of, as the financial impact statement says, approximately $9,000. Again, this is just a follow-up, it should have been the resolutions that were approved in, in December. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions?
Yep.
Okay, let me open it up to the public, if the public has any questions on this item. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment section, and there's a resolution for us to look at on page 68.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to offer a resolution as long as there's no other comments. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution of the city council of the city of Cloverdale approving a one-time payment of $1,000 for unaffiliated employees, the city manager, assistant city manager, community development director, chief of police, finance director, city engineer slash public works director, and city clerk, similar to the one-time payment provided to all represented employees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Irene, could we have a roll call?
Of course. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Let the records also reflect that Councilmember Cruz recused herself from this item. And Jose, I guess everybody could come back except Susie?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. One second, Susie.
No, you're good.
No, 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 Marta can come back.
Okay, next item is item number 10, establishment of a new salary schedule for the position of finance director, and amendment to the at-will employee agreement with Susie Holmes for the position of finance director. And city manager, is that your item?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The, I, I think I can say pretty confidently that the, the city council recognizes the, the importance and need to attract and maintain a, a very strong and professional workforce. And in order to do so, it's really necessary to compensate employees in a competitive way and in a way that appropriately, you know, recognizes their responsibilities. In, in, in order to share, ensure a, a fair compensation schedule, I requested a compensation analysis be, be performed for the position of finance director by regional government services. And by reference, regional government services is a professional human resource firm that has significant knowledge of the labor market. RGS conducted a salary survey of comparator cities. The cities included Sebastopol, Cattati, City of Sonoma, and Healdsburg, as well as St. Helena. And based on review of the comparator cities and, and as well as internal classifications, it's necessary to ensure equity, equitable parity among classifications within the city, the, RGS prepared a, and recommended updates to the salary schedule for the, the finance director. What we are recommending is moving away from kind of setting a single salary to establishment of a, a five-step salary schedule that's pretty similar with regards to the employment agreements that the council has approved for your assistant city manager, your police chief, and as well as your city clerk. And what we're recommending tonight is approval of the, a third amendment to the at-will employment agreement with, with the incumbent for the finance director position, Susie Holmes, which would authorize the salary amendment for the finance director classification. And it would place an employee within the new salary schedule. The, included in your packet is a resolution that would authorize the city manager to execute the, the third amendment that would effectuate this proposed change to the salary schedule. And the city manager, I'm, I'm recommending council approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Councilmembers, any questions?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public would like to say anything? Okay, seeing no one, let's bring it back to the dials. There's also a resolution on page seventy-one, if somebody would like to offer that.
I'll offer the resolution.
Second, please.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Aye. Susie, you can come on back up. Next item, uh, item number eleven, and, uh, Mr. Kelly, I think this is yours also, Kincaid Fire and PG&E Power and Gas Shut-Off After Action Review Report and Planning Process for Development of a Resilient Strategy for the City of Cloverdale.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, I, I'm, I'm really delighted to be able to bring this forward tonight. Uh, it was a considerable effort to prepare a, a report that outlines the city's response to the emergency events that were generated from the, the Kincaid Fire. As, as this council fairly, knows fairly well, uh, PG&E initiated a, what they refer to as a Public Safety Power Shut-Off, or PSS, on, uh, October twenty-third, uh, which at that time, uh, in, in the evening following a council member, council meeting, a, a, a fire broke out, um, northeast of Sonoma County that generated, uh, or initiated a, a, a very large fire referred to as the Kincaid Fire. Uh, the subsequent events resulted in the activation of the city's Emergency Operations Center, uh, and for nearly a five-day period, the city was, you know, without power, uh, and subsequently, uh, without, without gas due, due to the power outage. Luckily, we, we, we escaped the, the, the major impacts of the fire, but there were lots of, uh, ancillary impacts, uh, from the fire resulting from the evacuations that occurred in Geyserville, uh, Healdsburg, and the town of Windsor. In, in response to, I think, what we heard from the community, that there was real interest in, uh, discussing how we respond to these events in the future, um, we, uh, were approached by, um, uh, Daniel and Diana Holmesy, who are both emergency management professionals in Northern California, uh, who, uh, agreed to assist us with preparing a workshop to conduct a debrief with the community. Um, on December fifth, we, well, prior to December fifth, we, we put out a, a draft agenda, uh, and, and sent out, uh, a, a meeting invite, uh, to the community to attend the debrief, um, which was then in turn facilitated by both Diana and Daniel. Um, and, as a result of that, we prepared, uh, an after-action review report that highlights, uh, some of the, the, um, the, the key points that were articulated by, uh, the debrief participants. Uh, and I think the feedback was, uh, well-received. Uh, it was an opportunity to really kind of take in all points of view. I know some council members were, were able to attend. And what the after-action review, uh, attempted to do is really, you know, capture the concerns and the comments that were, uh, shared by the attendees, uh, during that meeting. Um, and, uh, also, uh, with, with the assistance of Daniel and Diana, uh, we provided kind of some, some key findings, uh, on, uh, you know, four critical areas that we can evaluate and look at going forward. Uh, those include, uh, you know, critical resources, uh, those addressed really, uh, the infrastructure that's necessary for a city like Cloverdale and our partners, uh, within the city and our other organizations to be able to weather these types of events going forward, uh, which, you know, one of the primary, uh, types of, uh, infrastructure needs is, is really, uh, backup generation or power systems so that we can ins- ensure, you know, continuity of services. Uh, we, we really saw that, that tremendous need for that in our community, uh, you know, during that, during that, that whole power shut-off Kincaid Fire event. Um, in addition, we also, uh, see a need for, uh, additional communication systems. Uh, there was, uh, tremendous investment by the county in alert and warning systems that were used very heavily, uh, during the event by the county. Um, and since that time, uh, the city has invested in some improvements in our own alert and warning systems, including, uh, funding, uh, improvements to our, our Nixal Alert System, as well as investments in, uh, high-low sirens. But there's still more work to do to make sure that we have adequate communication systems, uh, in the city, particularly, I think, around our internet infrastructure for, for public facilities. The, the one key area, I think, where there was, uh, tremendous input was around, uh, the issue of care and shelter. Uh, I think that's where, uh, we, we saw a, a lot of passion and input from our community and need for, uh, really, a lot of, lot more organization and, uh, structure on how the community can come together and address that particular issue. And, and those are, those are outlined in the report. I think, um, one of the, the key, uh, elements to improve our care and shelter function is really to establish a formal agreement with the Citrus Fair. Uh, Citrus Fair, uh, currently, uh, it, it does, does not take direction from the city, uh, because they are their own pri- private, you know, nonprofit with their own board of directors. And, but I can see that there's a real need to, uh, formalize our relationship and possibly put some funding towards that, but also look at, uh, organizing the community, uh, so that it's got systems in place to also provide what we, we see me, see now as, as, uh, important strategy of self-care, and to ensure that our business community, our, uh, our, you know, uh, our, our organizations, uh, that represent the various interest groups in our communities, whether they're the elderly population, whether they're the Latino population, whether the farmworker groups, uh, uh, you know, to, to our Chamber of Commerce, are organized in such a way that we can come together during these events and really provide a cohesive set of services that ensure that we, we weather these types of events going forward. Um, last but not least, we certainly recognize with our small team that there's a tremendous amount of work to do in the arena of preparedness. Um, and that, and, you know, particularly means that, uh, the, the staff of the Emergency Operations Center, uh, are, uh, better trained for future emergency events and how we, uh, come together to ensure that we're, you know, addressing the important needs of our seniors, uh, our, you know, people with access and functional needs, uh, you know, the economically disadvantaged. Um, and so, you know, that ties back into that care and shelter function, but, uh, need to, uh, provide, uh, more, uh, training relative to, uh, how we, uh, interact with, uh, our organizations when we, when we do activate our Emergency Operations Center. So, what we really tried to do is, through this after-action review, is make sure we reflected the input of, of, of the community and ensure that those, uh, folks that maybe may not normally have a voice in the process, that their voice is somehow, uh, captured and reflected. And I think that's shown in terms of the priority stakeholders that were identified in the workshop. Um, and, um, it, it, I, I think, what, what, what we heard is, is feedback was, what are the next steps, city? What it, what are you going to do next to help us, uh, address these, these critical needs? Um, and, in response to that, developed a, a, a planning outline, uh, that's intended to, uh, provide, again, a framework for, uh, trying to organize the community and engage the community, uh, in, um, you know, a preparedness effort. Uh, both Diane and Daniel have agreed to, you know, bring their, uh, professional expertise, uh, to the city and assist us with those efforts to try to, you know, organize those, those, the, these disparate groups so that we have a more cohesive strategy to address these types of emergency events. It's not a matter of, uh, if, it's a matter of when, and the more we can do to kind of really, uh, support our organization, uh, and groups and, and organize our, our neighborhoods, uh, and organize, uh, you know, all aspects of our community, from our grocery stores, uh, to our nonprofits, uh, to our faith-based organizations, to be ready to, uh, step in and identify how and, and, and what they're going to do during that next event, I think, will, will help us be more resilient as a community. So, what, what we tried to put together was really, uh, a, 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 a process to engage a, a steering committee that could then reach out to those groups and, and actually do the collaboration, the workshops, to, uh, you know, try to get us better organized. And I think that's something that was really an outcome of that debrief that I heard, is something that is really desired. Uh, you know, you hear it among the nonprofits, how can we, how can we work together? Um, so, what we put together really doesn't identify any, any specific groups at this point. We wanted to, uh, I wanted to be really careful about naming names, um, and, because, uh, I recognize this, this kind of process kind of was developed out of kind of grassroots in a sense, because this is feedback we received directly from the community, uh, and we tried to put it down on paper, uh, the process to engage the community and, and how we can take their input and, and, and get better organized. Uh, I think, to actually, uh, reference and designate what's committee or what, what organizations we want to invite to the table is something to come, but I want to make, I wanted to make sure that, uh, council had the opportunity to weigh in on the, on the proposed planning process. Obviously, uh, given its importance, uh, get your feedback on the priority that this takes in our work plan, because I think it, it does require, uh, a staff time and, and ultimately may require that through the budget process, uh, that council designates some funding, uh, towards, uh, implementing some of what might come out of this effort. Um, you know, in particular, I could see establishing an emergency fund that we have ready and available so that the next time there's an event, uh, we've got funds set aside and budgeted for the purposes of trying to address, uh, uh, some of these, uh, activities. I know, for example, there was, uh, a real push to support Citrus Fair and some of their feeding operations, but we didn't have, uh, you know, kind of a process set up for that. So, I, I think that's something that, at least, I hope we can, uh, really establish as part of this, is, um, uh, building our relationship with Citrus Fair, uh, to, you know, support care and shelter functions. But along with that, try to build, uh, more resiliency into our facilities, such as the senior center, uh, such as the veterans hall, so that we can, we can have those warming centers and those cooling centers and, and our public facilities, uh, established to, uh, better weather the next event. So, uh, what we wanted to do is, is bring forward the after-action review, uh, for your consideration, um, as well as the planning outline, so that you have the opportunity to kind of weigh in on what that planning process looks like, uh, and, you know, make sure that council, uh, supports, you know, engaging in that planning process with the community. So, that, that really concludes an overview of, of this item. Uh, I, I do want to acknowledge the, the work and commitment of time that both, uh, Daniel and Diana provided, both at the debrief, but also with preparation of the report. I, I think it's, it's good information. Uh, and, um, you know, I, I, they, and myself and the chief put a fair amount of time into trying to document that and put that together, uh, for, for your review and consideration.
Thank you, David. Uh, council members, um, we, we are here, uh, this evening to give feedback on the concept of the, um, of, of the plan and, uh, not get down into the details right now. On page seventy-seven, there's, um, a couple of options, one through three. Um, so, why don't we start down this end? Marta, would you like to begin with input on the, on the concept of the plan?
I really, uh, want to commend David and the team for putting this together. Uh, it's very important. Um, given that we need to have a management team, I believe that there should be a bi-cultural, bilingual person in that management team. And, uh, I think that since we're going to have County and Red Cross, Lisa Carreño from United Way of Wine Country, who is in charge of 211, should be part of that management team. Uh, so, if you would note on that and perhaps, uh, think about it a little more, because, um, even though there's going to be opportunities for community, uh, organizations to be in this planning, uh, I believe that we need to continue to acknowledge the almost forty percent population that we have of Latino members of this community. And having Lisa Carreño or somebody of her office that deals with 211 in emergency for Sonoma County and the United Way would be a great asset to have in the management team. Um, and yes, it is a great effort, and David and I talked today for a long time about communication in Cloverdale and how to become more, uh, effective. And I'm sure that's going to be something that we're definitely going to continue to talk about, because we want to make sure that everybody's safe and have access to information. So, thank you very much, and I think this is a very good plan.
And, and I, I think we'll reach that point when we'll reach out to, to different people to be part of the organization. But as far as the actual, uh, working plan, are you comfortable with the way it's laid out?
Yes, I am, but Lisa Carreño is a director of Sonoma County, United Way, and I believe that she should be part of that management team.
Okay, but, okay.
Of everything else, yes. I said, yes, I agree.
Okay, good. Uh, councilmember Turner?
Yes, I agree with the report and the timeline and everything else I'm supposed to agree to.
I, okay.
Yeah, okay.
How long you been married, Dave?
Thank you.
Councilmember Brigham?
Yeah. Um, I especially want to point out, uh, page eighty-five and eighty-six, there's nothing you missed. All the bitching I did after that whole thing happened, you got everything. The backup generators, everything is, is in there that I want to see. If we get half of this done, I would be thrilled.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, I, um, support this approach and great job by, uh, staff. Uh, and I just have, uh, two kind of semi-comment questions, and I'm, I'm just wondering how staff sees this dovetailing with, um, the climate action plan, and then also, you know, what, what result in additions to, um, the legislative platform. I just want to make sure that while we're working on this process, that we still have, you know, those two, um, pieces in mind.
Mayor, if I can, uh, I, I, I think the point that councilmember Bagby is making is, is right on. In fact, uh, I think that's why we want to call it a resiliency strategy. And, uh, I mean, one of the things that, um, I think is, is critical, uh, is particularly, um, for City Hall and our public facilities, is that we do have those, uh, resilient energy systems in place, as an example. Uh, so, you know, maybe, we realize even with generators and trying to get fuel, uh, during the emergency events, uh, took significant planning efforts, and I want to commend, uh, Darren Hernandez, our, our, uh, senior water operator, who was doing a fantastic job at, uh, you know, managing our fuel supplies. Um, but, you know, to the extent that we can have, uh, backup power systems that don't rely on fuel and we can still ensure continuity of operations, uh, I think is, is absolutely the direction we want to go. Uh, with that said, there may be some, uh, you know, short-term things that we do, that we, we, to, to have generators and things like that, uh, to, to bridge the gap until we can fully fund those systems, but we shouldn't lose sight that, that's, that's really the goal. Um, and, but also, I, I think looking at those resiliency strategies around our food system, uh, and ensuring, I mean, because that was also, I think, one of the critical, uh, i- issues that came out of this event was, you know, ensuring that, uh, our, our community has adequate food supplies. And that's, it's, that's, it's a real challenge. Um, but, you know, looking at how we can become, uh, more resilient in that, in that area, uh, and, and also, and, and with our- and also in, in with our water system and looking at, you know, making our, our system more efficient and having, you know, the backup supplies in, in place, you know, through, through good water system planning, which, you know, I know our, our city engineer is, is committed to. So, you know, absolutely, I think it's, they go hand in hand. You know, the more we can do to not be reliant on outside sources, the better. Though obviously we live in a global environment and we're all tied together, we won't probably be able to entirely detangle ourselves, but I, I think that's why we want to give it the name of resiliency strategy so we can really be as best prepared to handle these things. What we saw was a short event, but it was long enough for us to kind of see what could happen if it progressed into a longer timeframe. And, you know, it would have really presented challenges and so that's something that we want to, we want to prepare for.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Turner?
So I, I think you bring up a good point and I, I didn't mean to be overly facetious with the agree thing, but we're going to get going on this for a year and then if it happens again, we're going to realize maybe a few things we didn't know. I, I think this is fantastic foundationally and, and the individual that you spoke of that's bilingual and has ties to multiple different underserved communities says that's a good addition, but I truly believe that if, when the 2020 fire season hits and we realize certain things that we may not have even thought of in 2019, we will probably see yearly changes come to this very fluid document.
Hopefully not an air squeak.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Turner. I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on this item, please come forward. Yeah, come on in.
I could just say, we're hearing from the governor and he's writing a candle and Diana are, their mother was.
I, we, I, I was just about to thank them through you, so.
That is why they are, they're interested in the whole thing, they do want to be sure that I'm.
Right. And we, and we truly do appreciate that. So I'm going to bring it back and I just have a couple of comments. And David, you're absolutely right, we need to set some money aside in the budget and, and we need to have a real good work relationship with the Citrus Fair so that they can manage that. You and I have talked before and my, my big concern is we have a lot of folks doing different things throughout the community during a disaster without everyone else knowing it. We need a central point. You know, if we're in it for the long haul, maybe five days without electricity, we can't have everybody feed the first day. You know, that's got to be coordinated through the cit- or somebody. Hopefully Katie at the Citrus Fair, you're going to feed this day, you're going to feed the next day so that our, our supplies are maintained properly. And Daniel and Diana, kudos for them coming up here with mom. We do appreciate it. So with that being said, anything else from council members? Councilmember?
Where is this going to live? What committee?
Staff did not provide a recommendation on a subcommittee to oversee this. You know, it's kind of, in a way, it's, it's, it's its own effort, but, you know, that may be something that council wants to consider if you, you know, given the process, it, it's going to have a, a pretty significant involvement with the community at large, so it's, it's not a insular group, you know, of a council subcommittee, but, you know, council may want to put this on a particular subcommittee agenda for kind of updates on the process. Given its significance, I, I'll want to ensure that the council as a whole is kept updated about its status and progress. So it's, it's really up to council if you want to say, hey, put this on a subcommittee agenda or just ensure that I, as your city manager, keep you, keep you up to date on this planning process. You know, we could, we could even put it on your agenda and just give you regular updates, but it's, 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 it's really how the council is.
Thank you, David. I'd like to recommend that it goes on the planning CDA subcommittee, at least to start. And the, the updates, most important to the full city council.
Okay.
So if we can do that? Councilmember Cruz?
Yeah. It's just that David just mentioned Darren and, and water and so on, and I think that in this committee, we need to think of the operations of, of water for the city. So just, just an, an observation that water is essential and it's the only source that we, and resource that we had during the PSBS and perhaps it needs to be addressed somehow.
Okay. Anything else, council?
Nope.
Okay, so we're directing the staff to move forward. We're going to give it a home of the planning CDA subcommittee and the full city council will be updated once in a while in your weekly report. Okay, let's move on to item number, anybody need a break or we okay? Cruzen, they okay?
This is the last thing, this is it.
Well, kind of. I've got a couple of things.
Nobody give a.
Next is item number 12, which is a letter of support for SMARTS request for $20.9 million from the state transit with their new initiative. So David, this is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Included in your packet is a letter, a, a draft letter in support of SMARTS application for $20.9 million from the state's transit and interstate rail capital program or stirp, stirp. The, the proposal is, or the letter of support is to improve the bridge crossing at the Russian River immediately south of the city of Heelsburg. We see this as a key infrastructure improvement to help move, continue to move the SMART train north and, you know, the SMART's going to apply for the proposed funding, you know, regardless of our, our action, but letters of support such as that included in your packet is, is just a means to garner support from the state for that particular funding. And our recommendation is to authorize the, the mayor to execute the letter. Of course, you can amend it if you'd like to with any additional language that you see fit or provide alternative direction to the mayor or city staff regarding the letter.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Councilmembers, questions, comments, recommendations for the letter?
Mine to me. Doesn't cost us anything.
Okay, yeah, well, you know, just let me open it up to the public. Anything from the public on this? Okay, let's bring it back up here. You know, the, the only comments I have and, you know, this, the train is never coming to Cloverdale unless that bridge is repaired. The only thing in, in, I didn't pick it up in the letter, but I'd, I'd like to see that somehow this, these funding, this $20 million be specifically earmarked for the restoration of the, of the rail bridge and cannot be used for anything else. I can just see that money disappearing and, and the bridge not being repaired. So that, that's the only com- huh?
I guess my question is where, I mean, given SMARTS track record, I don't understand about disappearing tax money. I mean, it sounds, sounds like an accusation.
No, no, no. What I mean is being used for something else besides the restoration of the bridge.
Yeah, but I don't think they've, they don't have a track record of doing that. They have been on target, on, on budget and they, I just don't understand where that's coming from.
Well, that was coming from, I, I want to see the money used for the bridge. I don't want to see it being used for anything else.
Well, and I think that the grant funders would also want to see that. I wonder, so, so Jose, isn't it that the case that if they're applying for a grant and they're asking for this bridge money, that it has to go for that project? Because again, we're dealing with facts, right? Yeah.
It's what?
Facts.
It has to be used for that? Good, okay. Then I'm fine with it, you know, I'm more than happy to go ahead and sign it. Anything else? Any other comments on that? Okay, Mary Ann, you good with it?
Yep.
Okay. Next is the subcommittee items. I see none there. Subcommittee reports. Do we want to go through this, seeing how we haven't had a subcommittee in a while? Is everybody okay? Okay. Next item is council reports and, and I've just got a couple here. Tomorrow evening, on the ninth, we, everybody received an invitation to the city of Sebastopol for a social night. I just want to make sure everybody has that and if you're going, have a good time, drive safely. Next is the city select. I guess letters have to be in for certain positions that are coming up, so make sure you, you take a look at that. It should be in everybody's box. Board of Supervisors, they reorganized. I'm sure everybody received this one. Susan Goran is the chair, Lynn Hopkins is the vice chair, and then we have David Rabbit, Shirley Zane, and James Gore. So with that, anybody else from the city council with reports other than what's written?
I submitted mine in writing.
Yes. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes. I was happy to work with Latinos Unidos and Baby2Baby and American Airlines in bringing gifts and goods for more than 200 kids in Cloverdale. Actually Chief Ferguson and David Kelly got a glance of the work that we did for three days organizing. And we are going to establish an ongoing distribution of goods for babies in Cloverdale.
Okay, good. Legislative reports? City manager, city attorney report? Well, I guess that's going to conclude everything, staff. I'd like to thank you for.
Future agenda, future agenda items.
Future agenda items.
I just have one, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Did I miss that? Yes, I'm sorry.
This, this will be real quick. Chief, Chief Ferguson, Mr. Kelly, last year we committed some resources in order to attain a drone and a UTV for the city of Cloverdale Police Department at a meeting in the future where you have an opportunity to let us know how those pieces of equipment have been utilized and whether the department is benefiting from them. That would be great to know. Thank you.
Yes.
As I mentioned earlier during the meeting, for future agenda item, I'd like some discussion around community education around homeless, homeless solutions and challenges and what we're doing to address issues, what we can do, what is not in our jurisdiction or purview. And if that can be, if it needs to be dovetailed into the homelessness plan, I'm fine with that. I want to make sure that we get some kind of, you know, solid community outreach, community education so that everyone gets on the same page as far as what our, our plan and our abilities are.
Staff, did we get everything?
I think that's important.
Okay. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes. There has been some requests by community members to have some of the parks staff assist them with planting and trimming and so on. And David and I were talking about this and perhaps it would be good for future agenda item to discuss if we could put together some sort of seminar for the public in regards to planting and caring for gardens, utilizing some of our arborists.
The master gardeners do a program through the library.
Yes, but I know that. However, we have this continuous request to have Hector do this and do that. And I think that we would probably calm some of those requests if maybe we have something by him that it's a very homey person and very familiar and maybe stop some, and, and it's a way to also put a stop to all these requests by so many members in the community.
Well, that's something staff can take a look at and see if we can squeeze that in and what Hector's time looks like and the experience to the city for that.
Poor Hector.
For what?
Poor Hector.
Yeah, I know. And we don't give him any help.
He has subjected himself to some of that.
So if that's it, we're going to, David, did you have something to say?
I, I was just going to add that I think we, we will want to develop a workshop agenda and invite additional professionals from, you know, Russian River Watershed Association, you know, maybe local arborists, you know, it's, if you want to do something that's more on native plants and how you take care of vegetation.
And the Cloverdale Gardening Club, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure they're. Anything else? Staff, now thank you for, for coming this evening and participating. Zoe, Zoe, thank you. And Irene, thank you as well. Meeting adjourned.